Congratulations to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, thank you all for coming. We have a lot on the agenda this evening, so my apologies to my fellow board members and to the public. We're going to try to keep this moving along as we get everything in with the February break and everything coming up. I guess we really only have one more meeting in February, so we have to get through this stuff this evening. At this point, can I have a motion to accept the agenda? So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Now, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Harrison to recognize some of our fine students.
Good evening, everyone. Certainly nice to see you all here tonight, and we always particularly enjoy the opportunities when we're able to stop and recognize the great work of either our students and/or our staff. And tonight, we have the good fortune of acknowledging some of our students who have had some great accomplishments at Main Street School. So I'd like to invite Principal Casey to come forward to explain why they're here and acknowledge them, and then, students, we'd like you to come forward to receive a certificate from the Board of Education. So Ms. Casey?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I would like to thank Board of Education and the administration for recognizing our students who have excelled in the Main Street School Spelling Bee. So this year, we had the Seventh Annual Main Street School Spelling Bee, which was held on December 17th. And the purpose of the Spelling Bee is for our students to get together in a friendly, competitive atmosphere with the support of the rest of Main Street School, to use their talents and to study and to learn more than they knew before they started out with the Spelling Bee. This is a true community event because it not only involves the students, but it's supported by the PTSA. We also had, as our moderators, the Mayor of Irvington, Mayor Smith, and Dr. Core, Assistant Superintendent, and also, the committee. It was involved, the judges for the Spelling Bee were several teachers from Main Street School, Ms. Imber, Mrs. Lee, Mrs. Richardson, and Mrs. Sensi. So that was the representation of the staff of Main Street School. We had a very great participation in this. We had eighty-five fourth grade students who chose to participate, and out of that eighty, those eighty-five students, twenty-one students became finalists. We had eighty-eight fifth grade students participating, and out of that number, we had twenty finalists. The Irvington PTSA provided the trophy and a Barnes and Noble gift card for each winner, as well as a gift certificate. And each winner also received a medal, or a ribbon, and a medal for each runner-up. The PTSA also provided beautiful T-shirts, which the students here all have received and will keep, I'm sure, for a long time as a memento of this event. The fourth grade B went for six rounds, and the winner of the fourth grade B was Leo Mermelstein. Leo, maybe you could stand up? Leo's winning word was conscience, and he did a great job with it. The fourth grade runner-up was Grace Kachin. Jason Grace.
Leo, Leo, you're welcome. Congratulations. I know you. Hey, Grace.
The fifth grade B went for nine rounds, and the winner of the fifth grade B was Mary Cuff. And Mary's winning word was horrendous.
That describes many of the board meetings.
And also, the other fifth grade, the fifth grade runner-up was Jamie Kamora, who I don't believe is here this evening. But I just would like to say that I'm so impressed with the competitive and supportive nature of activities like this at Main Street School. It's a wonderful thing to be there, to see the students up on the stage, very courageous, and to see the entire student body supporting them and cheering them on. So that's a great, a great spirit that exists in Main Street School. And I can tell you that we'll be back again soon, hopefully, because this week, we went around and presented information about the Geography B, which is coming up soon in March. So I know that the students also are enthusiastic about that. But I'm so proud of these students and all the students who chose to participate because they were each given a list of 500 words to study before the pre-B. So it was a lot of work, but they did a great job. So I thank you so much to the Board and the administration.
Congratulations, Laura. That's great.
Well, congratulations to all of our students that participated, and certainly, it was an honor to acknowledge our winners tonight. We also have the good fortune, if I may continue.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
To acknowledge a number of our middle school and high school student artists that are going to have their artwork on display beginning Thursday, and will run all the way through February 21st at the galleries of the Interchurch Center. I believe there's some information in the back, plus, it is on our Facebook page. They had some unique work that they were focusing on. Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" is being reinterpreted and reflected upon through our students' artwork, and some real impressive pieces were generated. Our students, along with those from the Calhoun School, will be featured in this particular installment. So we certainly want to congratulate all of our students and acknowledge the efforts of Ms. Schmerz, who made this opportunity possible. This work was really a step, excuse me, outside of the curriculum, so it was extra work for everybody involved, and really, some impressive products were generated. I also want to acknowledge that for folks to really stay tuned to our calendar, it seems like there's so many, so many events going on in the district besides the activity that's happening with all the Board of Education meetings, whether it's tied to budget, field, and facility discussions. But there are many, many important things that are occurring in our schools, ranging from orientation programs, where students are starting to prepare for next year already, to the Dowslane Winter Concerts. So please stay in tune with the calendar and do not miss anything. We also have a number of informative presentations that will be had here at our Board of Education meetings. Tonight, we're fortunate to have a presentation from our middle school leadership team and Dr. Core on the sixth through eighth Common Core learning standards and those shifts. And then, on February 11th, we'll be looking to our high school team for a similar discussion. Tonight, we'll also talk a little bit about technology, so there's a lot of important dialogue that's occurring in this room. So please be a part of it when you can. If you can't be here in person, please tune in and watch the videos online or on television. Finally, I do want to speak about our Fields and Facilities Initiative. Last week, we hosted a special Board of Education meeting where we began to establish a plan for making decisions to move forward on an initiative to address not only our fields, but to potentially make some improvements in our facilities. And in doing so, we're in the process of creating a Fields Project Committee that will weigh the options for the fields and the track and make a recommendation to the Board of Education. Additionally, the Board of Education Buildings and Grounds Committee is in the process of evaluating particular projects with a focus towards energy conservation, but also keeping in mind items that are identified in the district's five-year facility plan, and through their analysis and study, will make recommendations to the Board of Education. At this point in time, we're targeting the date of March 4th for each of those reports. So please stay tuned. We'll continue to give updates, and I encourage everyone to be a part of that important dialogue.
One question on the Fields Committee. How has the response been so far?
The response has been quite favorable. Yes, we have certainly more than enough folks to be able to.
Great, because we don't have a lot of time to get people to volunteer.
That is correct. We've received a number of applications thus far.
Great.
That's great.
And to the point that was made at the meeting on Tuesday, it does appear to be quite representative of the community. Folks, children in schools without, folks that are involved, civic organizations, athletics, parents of children of different age levels in the schools, so it seems like we'll have a fairly representative, productive group.
Thank you. I guess, moving to our first presentation of the evening, which is the Grade Six to Eight Common Core Learning Standards. And for those who are following along, this is the follow-on to the Common Core presentation that you presented, I guess, in the last regular public meeting, dealing with K through...
Through five.
Through five, yeah.
Yeah, so as we know, and I don't want to steal from my colleagues, but there are shifts afoot in instruction, not only across Irvington and New York State, but across the nation, and it's having impacts on how instruction is delivered and what our students are learning and how they're learning in our classrooms. So we've broken this into three different segments, first focusing on the elementary grades and tonight, middle school, and then, the next regular Board of Education meeting on the 11th, we'll talk about impacts in high school. So with that said, I would like to turn over to Dr. Core.
Okay, so, so, good evening, everybody. For me, this is very exciting to actually see the progression that, the work that we presented, K-5, and then, working with David and Joyce to figure out what made the most sense. The great thing about the Common Core is how it really is a progression, and so, we wanted to make sure we weren't being repetitive and giving you information that we felt we gave you two weeks ago, but really informing and sharing and giving you a picture of how these Common Core standards shift and move as we address the needs of middle school students. So if you remember from the K-5 presentation, we put on the screen the shifts in ELA and literacy. And the shifts are the K-12 shifts, and so, the shifts remain the same, but when David, Joyce, and I talked about what made the most sense and where do we really see something that was really different than maybe what you might have heard from the K-5 presentation, what we really, what we really discussed was the idea of Shift Two and Shift Four, so knowledge in the disciplines. And Joyce and David will both give you examples of student work and speak to why the interdisciplinary or the disciplines are so important when we look at the Common Core in literacy, as well as text-based answers. So at this point, Joyce is going to take you through the next few slides.
I was going to say, I'm not really prepared, I need a podium. I was going to say, on that last slide, I can't negotiate all three things, so, yeah. So, on the last slide with the shifts, I think it's important to think about the shifts in the Common Core. It's reading like a detective and writing like an investigative reporter. And so, really, what you're going to hear tonight is this idea of students going deeper into the texts that they read and then having to have evidence to support that thinking. And we're going to give you some specific examples of what that looks like. So if you look at the Common Core strands for ELA, so this is just the language of the Common Core. This is a slide that you would have seen in the K-5 presentation. We wanted to put it up here again, just so you would see that it's a continuum. It's a K-12 continuum of the language of the Common Core. So for the Common Core, the domains for reading, the domains exist K-12, and that's an important thing to keep in your mind, that what teachers, what the shifts that teachers are making in their instruction and their practice and in the curriculum is happening K-12 in a consistent way, utilizing the same language. So you're going to see an example of that. So this is the progression of grade level-specific standards. So you can see it's grade six, grade seven, grade eight, and this is the reading standards for informational text, 612. And so, it's, the great thing about how the reading standards are laid out is that they really build. They're a build and sophistication throughout the grade. So sixth grade, you'll see, we're going to talk about standard one, and you'll see in a few slides how, it's just a matter of a change of a few words that raises the level of sophistication, but the language stays the same. And this is really important to keep in your mind, because what we're trying to do is, teachers use the Common Core language as they instruct and work with students, so that language for students remains the same kindergarten through 12th grade with sophistication changes, which means that no longer are students entering a classroom trying to figure out what teachers mean. They know now, and they will know, because, you know, we're only in our second year of aligning and implementing the Common Core, but they will know, as they enter a classroom, what a teacher means by the word "cite," or what a teacher means by textual evidence. That won't be something that they'll have to figure out, and all teachers will be using the same common language for naming things. So this is an example, this is example of how in ELA, literacy standards build. So this is just so you could see the structure. So the overview is that reading is literature or informational, the key ideas and details are the domain, and then, there's an anchor standard. So the anchor standard remains the same kindergarten through 12th grade. That's very important. So by grade, it's delineated what that expectation is, but the anchor standard stays the same. This is a slide I referred to earlier, where you can see, here's anchor standard one, "Read closely to determine what the text says explicitly and to make logical inferences from it. Cite specific textual evidence when writing or speaking to support conclusions drawn from the text." That stays the same kindergarten through 12th grade. I say it over and over, because I think it's really important to realize that there are, the anchor standards stay the same, so that the work that kids do is building to something. It's all a build, starting in kindergarten. So in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, in sixth grade, they have to cite the textual evidence to support the analysis. The change in seventh grade is that they have to do several pieces of textual evidence, and then, in eighth grade, they have to, they have to decide that what evidence most strongly supports what it is that they're trying to, what they're trying to say. So here's an example of close reading in ELA. So when we look at standard one we're in, when we look at close reading, so, close reading, it's this idea that we want kids to go deep into their text. We want students, so we left the Post-its on there, so you could see. So students are reading and rereading the texts that they, that they're choosing, and they're using Post-its, they're highlighting, they're underlining, they're looking for vocabulary. They're really delving deep to understand what the text, what the text is about. We want them to be active readers. We want them to really participate with the text, engage in the text. We want them to ask questions and annotate, because that's going to lead to them having deeper discussions and writing in a more sophisticated way. And so, this connects to the next slide, that, oh, can you go back? I'm sorry. I just wanted to read part of the, it's hard for me to see from here, but the part of the text I'm going to show you, because in my next slide, I'm going to give you an example of what students have to do. So we ask them to read closely, but they have an, they make a claim about the text, and then, they have to support that text. And they can't just have an opinion or an idea, they actually have to go into the text, name what it is that they're saying, and then, they have to explain what they're thinking. You know, what, why did I choose that piece of evidence, and why is it important in making my claim, substantiating my claim? So I'm just, if you read that section where it starts, "The next time," this is from "The Glass Castle" by Jeanette Wells. "The next time they visited, Brian's head was wrapped in a dirty white bandage with dried bloodstain. Mom said he'd fallen off the back of the couch and cracked his head open on the floor, but she and Dad had decided not to take him to the hospital. There was blood everywhere, Mom said, but one kid in the hospital at a time is enough. Besides, Dad said, Brian's head is so hard, I think the floor took more damage than he did. Brian thought that was hilarious and just laughed and laughed." So when you look at the student's response, so the student's response, responsibility now, or the standard that the student is meeting, is the student is going to cite, make a claim, and cite textual evidence, and then, explain thinking. So you can see, the task was to develop a claim statement, a theme statement, and then analyze which examples from the text support it. So, "In The Glass Castle" by Jeanette Wells, the writer shows that some people have different perspectives on what is safe and best for people. So, for example, and then, the student goes on to give the example from the text, on page 13 you just saw, well, Mom said, Mom said he had fallen off the back of the couch and cracked his head open on the floor, but she and Dad had decided not to take him to the hospital. There was blood everywhere, Mom said, but one kid in the hospital at a time is enough." So she cites the exact evidence for where she's going, and then, she goes on to explain where that comes from. So most parents would have rushed their kids to the hospital in that situation. The mom even said that there was blood everywhere. And so, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the idea is that students are going back to the text. They have to really, really substantiate what their thinking is.
So Joyce had mentioned earlier the idea of Shift Two, which is knowledge in the disciplines. And, you know, one of the things that we know, and we've known for a long time, is that it's important to be able to exercise literacy skills across disciplines. And one of the things that makes the middle school different, and ultimately, the high school different from elementary school, is that unlike elementary school, where one teacher is providing instruction in all these various content areas, in middle school, we're departmentalized, and high school students are departmentalized, and so, you've got a content specialist providing that instruction. And so, and as it should be. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the literacy skills necessary to access that content information and analyze that content information is provided, or built, and the instruction necessary to build them is provided. So you see here, knowledge in the discipline, reading in the content areas, this idea of reading to build content knowledge, not random, it's reading to learn, and so, we look at literacy in social studies and history, we look at science, we look at technical subjects. Those are all embedded in the Common Core, and there are standards that support them. So we go back to that anchor standard, number one, where, that Joyce cited before, and you see that within the Common Core standards, there are also specific literacy standards to the disciplines, specifically, social studies and science. And on the left-hand side there, you see, "Textual evidence to support analysis of primary and secondary source documents for social studies." Science, "Textual evidence to support analysis of science and technical texts." It's the literacy skills that are specific to those disciplines. You know, and as a former social studies teacher, you know, I could sit in a room with veteran social studies teachers that have taught for 20 or 25 years in the, well, we've always had to teach reading, and that's true. I mean, that's absolutely true. And what I think is different about the Common Core is that it's now, we're now in a place where we're naming the skills, and they're common from one discipline to another. It's not, you know, calling it one thing in social studies and something else in ELA. It's not, well, that's the ELA teacher's job to teach reading or writing. It's making that link between those two disciplines, so that students are practicing those skills over and over and over again, specific to the content that they're studying, but they're strengthening them rather than working, you know, in different ways and different subjects without a connection between the two. So here you have an example of close reading as it relates to eighth grade social studies in this case. Primary source documents, I mentioned a second ago, primary and secondary source documents, particularly, primary sources, become more and more important as students progress into the upper grade levels. This idea of students being able to take a piece of writing that was created at the time of a historical event, or, in this case, these are poems. It might be a visual image, it might be any number of primary sources that students might have to analyze, and in their analysis, they're going to have to utilize evidence from those sources to support that analysis. In this case, students in the eighth grade were prompted to read two poems that related to the immigration era in the United States. "New Colossus" from The Statue of Liberty and "Unguarded Gates," two poems with very different views on immigration. And over the course of several days, pulling those poems apart stanza by stanza, summarizing, analyzing them for meaning, and using the evidence that comes from those, those pieces to support their analysis is the task that students had to perform. A little while later, Joyce, when we move to writing, will show you some of the results of that work. Similarly, on our next slide in science, this is an example of a science text. So, again, texts come in all sorts of different forms, and they're specific to the disciplines. But what's different is that students are prompted now to make claims or support claims with evidence and analyze that evidence from the text, and really do additional thinking about that beyond what they might have been asked to do in the past.
So Shift Three should look familiar, because it was addressed in the K-5 presentation at length, so we're going to touch on it at the middle school. So what does it mean for middle school students? And so, it means that there's a recognition and a real effort at using complex texts, but balancing that with the idea of texts that are at students' reading level. And so, we want students to be given challenging texts, so that they learn, how do you access a text? What are the ways in which you can get into a text and understand a text, even if it's something that you don't have background knowledge for, or it's written at a sophisticated level, you don't have the vocabulary? What do you do as a reader when you're confronted with a text that is really what you at first think is too hard for you? And so, we do close reading. A lot of the texts are short texts that students do, and teachers use them as instructional tools, as well as giving students independent opportunities to work through these texts. So now, we move on to talk about the relationship between reading and writing. And so, you can see, the graphic is so that you can see that there's a relationship between reading and writing. And so, key ideas and details lines up with text types and purposes, craft and structure, production and distribution. So, for example, in reading, in craft and structure, if we're, in a reading, we're teaching kids to identify what it is that a writer does, what's writerly craft? What is the writer doing to get you to think about the text that they're writing in a certain way, or the ideas that they're writing in a certain way? And then, in production and distribution, as a writer, you're then writing in that way. You're taking what you learned as an observer or as a reader who's digging deep into a text, and you're now turning it on, turning it over, and you're writing in that way. So Shift Four, the text-based, text-based answers. So we really want students to have a careful, a deep level of attention to the text they're reading. So what does it mean for IMS? So students have to continue, they have to support their thinking with text, with evidence from the text. They have to make a claim, they have to substantiate that claim. And so, that takes us to the Assured Reading and Writing Experiences. So everyone knows we have Assured Writing Experience in the district and Assured Reading Experiences. So that means that from K-12, their students are assured, no matter who their teacher is, across a grade level, that they'll have an experience as a reader and as a writer in the five genres, in common genres, K through 12. And so, we're going to look at the argument example now. So in the argument, AWE, the task argument, it says, "Makes a claim, develops reasoning, and cites sources," parenthetically, and on a works cited page. So here, a student has written an argument essay, and as part of that argument essay, in the top orange, that she states her claim, "Due to higher human, I mean, due to higher human demands, overfishing and dependency, fisher being hurt, and humans are a main cause." So in order to substantiate that claim, that student has to do research and has to substantiate that claim with text evidence. And so, you can see, there's just highlighted one place, one example of text evidence that she used to support that claim. And students, depending on the grade level, you know, are, the core demands that they cite text evidence of the claims that they're making. Here's a social studies example that David shared. The student in an eighth grade social studies class did a close reading of the two poems, and as a result of doing the close reading of the two poems, they had to come up with a claim, and then, they had to substantiate that claim citing text evidence from both poems. So that's what's highlighted in gray, the quote from "The New Colossus," send me these, I don't need to read it, you can read it yourself, but that, what this is, what it exemplifies, is it exemplifies that across the content area now, not just in the ELA classroom, the Common Core demands that students are reading these texts, complex texts, in ELA, but also in science and social studies, and that students are having example, having experiences across their day in ELA and the content area, reinforcing the literacy standards. And so, this is another example of that in science. So here, there was a textbook page, and what science is doing is, you know, pre-C common Core, science notes were often done, you know, put PowerPoint up and, or, you know, students were assigned textbook pages to read, and then, they would take notes, or they would answer questions at the end of a chapter. And it's, there's really been a shift now, and so, what students need to do is, they have to read, they have to come up with a claim, it's called a CER, we call them a CER. They come up with a claim, then they have to cite specific evidence from the text, and then, they come up with some reasoning for what they've come up with for their claim and their evidence. And so, we really are, the Core has pushed us to demand that our students have opportunities that really push their thinking as readers and as writers in ELA classrooms, but also in the content area.
So we just want to wrap up ELA before we shift to math, and we just wanted to give you an example of how a standard builds in writing. So we also wanted to highlight for you the importance of the middle school and how the middle school is always sandwiched between, and so, what happens in fifth grade and where the kids are going in ninth grade really is driving our thinking. So we thought it would be interesting for you to take a look and see. So this standard, "Write arguments to support claims in an analysis of substantive topics or texts using valid reasoning and relevant sufficient evidence." So, that's the anchor. In fifth grade, you'll notice, it's write an opinion. So from fifth grade to the middle school, starting in sixth, that changes to argument. So sometimes, when you look at a standard, if you're not reading it and looking for the, what's changed, you don't notice. It's a nuance, because a lot of it is building. It's still supporting, it's point of view, it's taking claims. So in fifth grade, students can give an opinion. They still have to support it with a point of view, but it changes in middle school to argument. So we wanted to just highlight that for you. The other interesting thing about the writing standard for middle school is it remains the same. The grade-level standard is the same in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but in writing, there is, I think, five levels of subsets of expectations underneath each grade level. So what we're sharing for you is really technically letter A, and we wanted to show you... And we wanted to show you how that's what's changing. The anchor sta, the standard is staying the same and the subtext is changing. So in sixth grade, you can see they introduce the claim and organize the reasons and evidence clearly. What changes in seventh grade is they must include in their writing and in their evidence how the acknowledge the alternate, the alternate or opposing claim. So that is a shift. And then, as you can see, in eighth grade, it becomes even more sophisticated. So in fifth, it changes significantly. And then three years of middle school, we're building and building and building. And you'll notice in ninth grade, it changes again. And in ninth grade, they add the analysis piece. So I think that we've said it probably 10 times already, but we can't really stress enough how important this is. And this is language that teachers can make sense of for students and for themselves. I think that sometimes because we don't name it, even the teachers themselves are calling things differently, not because they think so differently, but just because we have not necessarily had the conversation about what to call it. So this has given us a door in to have a path that we think ultimately will support students in their learning. We're going to shift to mathematics now. So again, if you remember in the K-5 presentation, we talked a lot about math. We shared some examples of student work and our approach and some of the instructional strategies such as tape diagramming that we're working with students on. We are using the modules in K through five as our resource. And the middle school has done a tremendous job of realigning their curriculum in mathematics. They have continued to use some of the resources that they've been able to, that they already had, that align with the Common Core. They are also using the modules as a resource. And the value in that is that common language, again, they're very clear. It has been a great contribution to have Christine Rosner, K-5, as our math coach. She has already spent a part of a morning meeting with the middle school teachers, talking about what's going on K-5, what we're accomplishing, and where we see some of the gaps. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the gaps at the end, but our mathematics curriculum is also very focused and aligned, coming from the elementary school into the middle.
So again, we see the shifts for mathematics. And again, we're going to focus in on two of them, just coincidentally, two and four are the same numbers that we focused on from ELA and literacy. You know, and I want to just say a few words about those. And I would say coherence is a particularly important one. At the middle school, Raina illustrated on her last, on our last slide relative to the ELA and literacy, the fifth grade and the ninth grade, sandwiched around the middle school standards. And you know, this idea of coherence and making sure that there is a clear progression of learning and understanding and instruction for students is essential. Research tells us that one of the biggest indicators of student success at college is their success in algebra. We also know that, you know, one of the biggest indicators of success in algebra is success with fractions. And then with fractions, it's the ability to understand positive and negative integers. So the importance of knowing that our progression through those various topics and all the others in mathematics is a clear one and is understood by all teachers is an important one. And so as we look at some samples of student work tonight, we'll see, you know, places where teachers have demonstrated how they're building in this year's work on work that was done with students in the previous year. Shift four, deep understanding. I think this is the one we're going to probably spend the most time on here. I'll spend the most time on as I go through some work from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, because this is a place where there is a big change, a big change maybe for some of us, a big change for students. And I guess I'll summarize it by saying, it's a movement away from the idea of, you know, the fastest way to yes, all right, or the fastest way to get the right answer, and a movement more towards the ability to be able to use the content knowledge in mathematics for a variety of applications, so that it's not, you know, simply memorizing a formula, memorizing an algorithm, and that's how I can answer this type of a problem. It's, it aims to, we aim to go deeper. We aim to get to a place where students can explain their understanding of mathematics, can explain their reasoning, and therefore be able to take their content knowledge and apply it to something that might be unfamiliar. So one of the standards that goes through all the grades of middle school is expressions and equations. And that's the one we'll focus on tonight. It has a specific relationship to each of the grades in middle school and then obviously an important relationship to algebra, which is a course that is a high school level course, but that many of our eighth graders do take. Starting in sixth grade, you see expressions and equations. This idea of, you know, getting students from a place where, while they have had some introduction to variables, this isn't their first exposure to variables in the, in the sixth grade, it's the idea of building a foundation where students are able to take, you know, a real world situation, shift from that real world situation into algebraic models, and then shift back into creating a real world solution to that, to that situation, to basically utilize that, that understanding for that real world situation. And it will build, and ultimately we'll get back to that as we, as we get to the end of our time here. Looking at, and one example of sixth grade work, here's an example of students where they were asked to determine independent and dependent variables. They were asked to write an equation, to create a table that models the solution with several values. You know, and this idea of deep understanding, which is really where I want to focus, I'd like to just kind of take a window into what they might have done previously, or what a more traditional approach might have been. And really what students are doing now that they wouldn't have done in the past is, in the past, they might have had to solve that question by making a table, or by making a graph, right? Not necessarily by doing both. And what's, what they're being prompted to do at this point is not only to be able to do both a table and a graph, but to understand the connection between the two, understand the relationship that exists between the two, you know, able to make a model, or to model with mathematics in a variety of ways. Grade seven, we move on to this idea of the ability to understand rational numbers. And then once the understanding of rational numbers is achieved, to begin to move on to the skills necessary to work with equations. That's understanding like terms. That's the ability to add and subtract those like terms, to factor, to simplify equations and so forth. Ultimately, the idea here is that students will be able to apply their knowledge to solve equations and to move on ultimately to the eighth grade where they'll move into the linear equations. But if you take a second to look at a seventh grade example, look at the question here. Is the expression 2m squared plus 2m simplified? Explain why it is or is not simplified. Can the expression be factored? If so, factor. So again, you know, at one point in time, there might have been a question asked, you know, for a student to simplify an equation. And that would be that. Or it might be to factor the equation, and that would be that. Here, students are asked to actually understand whether or not it can be and to be able to explain why. And again, this, this goes back to the idea that we want students not only to be able to answer the question that's put in front of them here when they, when they might be doing several examples of them, but to see an unfamiliar equation and ultimately be able to answer that question by utilizing the knowledge that they had internalized here. Shows that, you know, and you can see here that there's a summary of the deeper understanding that students are showing. They understand what simplification means instead of just being able to complete a rote task based on a preconceived formula or, you know, as the teacher says here, you know, as they've learned the trick to doing it. Learning the trick works for a very specific set of circumstances. As I said a moment ago, in grade eight, the movement is into linear equations, beginning to understand systems of equations, understand slope, as students are getting prepared to move on to the high school level and ultimately go to algebra. And so there's, there's a great deal of time spent in developing that, that understanding over the course of the year. It consumes a great deal of the content of eighth grade. What happens is that students will take their seventh grade understanding of proportional relationships and begin to be able to create linear equations that can be graphed on a, on a grid. This, this particular question or this particular problem that's, that the student completes here is interesting because it's different than what formerly would have existed in a couple of ways. First, previously, students would not have been asked to multiply or divide in scientific notation in eighth grade. That's a new concept under the Common Core. But beyond that, they, the reasoning that the student engages in here, the ability to take a look at this question, to combine multiple areas of content knowledge and mathematics, to explain their answer, they basically used everything that they've learned up to this point, or a great deal of what they've learned up to this point. They're also quite precise in their explanation. This is an example of the ability to move from simply taking a set of numbers and answer the question based on the numbers, and look at a real world question or a question that requires them to actually engage in some of the literacy skills that we talked about before, make sense of it, and ultimately decide what process to use. And while we're not doing a high school presentation tonight, thankfully, we are talking a little bit about algebra, which is a high school course where many of our students will, will finish their time in mathematics in middle school. So specifically related to algebra, these categories all apply to the high school. Algebra is, is also contained within the middle school. Clearly, the build that we see in mathematics as we went through sixth, the seventh, the eighth, this idea of expressions and equations is building towards that idea of being able to engage in algebraic work. So in the case of our algebra example here, students are asked to solve a system of equations graphically. Very common, very traditional question that students would have to answer in algebra. What's different about this and what's, where we've moved, where we're pushing to move is to get students to express their understanding in another way. And that would be to look at that particular question, solve the following systems of equations graphically, to come up with a solution of 4 comma 1. Now, the second part asks students to create a new system of equations that has the same solution, and then show algebraically that the new system has the same solution. Okay? And so there's an understanding that's inherent there, that not only are they able to solve the equation based upon some rote memorization, but it goes beyond that to show that they understand what a solution is, understand what an equation is, how to create that equation, and why it would have the same solution as the other equations that they had already looked at. Couple of times over these slides that we just saw, I talked about reasoning, I talked about modeling. These are, these are some of the mathematical practices that are, that are contained within the Common Core standards. And what's important about the mathematical practices is a couple of things. I go back to a comment that's been made a number of times throughout the presentation for both literacy and for mathematics, and that's this idea of common language. It's important that as students grow, as students progress through content, as students go across their educational journey, that they not have to relearn multiple terms for the same thing. As they, as they begin to engage in greater complexity, you know, this idea of, these are the practices that we want you to engage in as you engage with the content, you know, that, that common language is essential. Also, it's important, and I think this is a place where, where our teachers are working quite hard, is the idea of embedding these practices with content. In other words, perpetually making the, the connection between the content, whether, so that's linear equations, and the practice is necessary to engage with that content. So modeling, using tools, precision, you know, all of these have, you know, additional meaning. But the idea is, we want students to be able to reason, we want students to be able to model, we want students to be able to use their skills as they engage in the practice of mathematics and demonstrate their understanding.
So we just wanted to wrap up with talking about some of the next steps. One of the things that we all know is this is still relatively new for us, and one of the questions teachers have is as they get to have their grade level of students, there are questions about, well, what came before? So if you're a sixth grade teacher, you don't have students who necessarily have had many years of Common Core standards and instruction behind them. So we, we are a work in progress and the teachers are trying to figure out, how do you fill those gaps? And what are the pieces that are things we were already doing? And what are the pieces that we need to develop and consider doing differently? So this is going to definitely take some time, but there's no question that the efforts of the K-5 teachers are being mimicked at the middle school. And everyone has, is shifting and moving and figuring out how to make this work. So David and Joyce will just share with you some of the next steps that they see happening at the middle school.
So in ELA, we started our alignment of the Common Core units of study two years ago. And that continues, that's ongoing work that happens for the ELA teachers in reading and in writing. Also, we've been, we've started the journey of examining the texts that we use. And this whole idea of balance between just write books and complex texts is something that's very much in progress at the middle school.
So we're in the process, as far as mathematics goes, of examining the math modules, looking at them as a possible resource for us. We're in a place where we have units of study that have been written and that are in the process of being reflected upon and revised as we've gone through just over a year now with, with those, pardon, with those units. Reviewing individual lessons, looking at, at the, as I said, the modules as a possible additional resource, as a place that can help us to further our efforts in that regard. You want to do that? Yeah?
Okay. Just to connect on the last two, I'm not sure, I believe at the K-5 presentation, we talked a little bit about some of the other changes that New York State has in mind for us, that we actually have not, are not adopted, and we have not moved in that direction yet, but we see it as on the horizon. So the Next Generation Science standards have gone through about, I want to say, six different levels of review, reviewed by science educators all over, all over the country, actually. And it is right now up for adoption in New York State, and I would anticipate that they will be adopted. That will be significant for us. It's, it will be K-12 science standards. The good news is they actually reference and align with the Common Core science, the content area standards. So in that way, it will be very helpful and parts of it will be organized and laid out in a way that makes sense for us. But it is definitely a completely different set of standards. We would be changing what, what we teach in different grades. So that will be work ahead. So while it will support the Common Core, the Next Generation Science standards will be a challenge. The most recent change that New York, or introduction that New York State has offered us, is they have just released the New York State Social Studies Framework. So the difference between a framework and standards is the framework gives you sort of an outline of where they're going. The next gen standards started that way. And when they're ready to be rolled out, they literally do the grade level specific like you saw tonight with the, and have seen with the Common Core. So for the framework, they've only given us literally a frame, an outline of where they see the standards going. There's quite a bit of work ahead of us. I would not anticipate us seeing actual social studies standards for quite some time, but we would be wanting to recognize this framework and start linking it to our research work around the research protocol, which we have in place. But it will also be a significant shift for us. So we continue to shift and flow with New York State. And I think we've seen a lot of success at both, you know, K-5 and now the middle school as well. So anything else you want to add? Nope? Okay. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It was very informative as always. I guess if, does the board have any questions? I mean, if so, John, do you want to start at your end and we'll work our way down?
I want to say this was very well done, very, very nice presentation. I'm really impressed. I have a few questions. Well, I'm not really, not with the middle school administration. What, in the, I think most have questions on ELA. To what extent are, and maybe this differs in the different grades, are the texts being used in the ELA class, are they shared texts that are read by an entire class? Or are they, every individual student is selecting their own texts to read? Or are there groupings? Or how does it work?
It's a combination of all of that. So I would say that it does vary grade by grade. I'm just going to put this down. But there are some commonalities. So we do have independent reading. I don't know if, talked about that at the elementary presentation. But we do have independent reading at the, at the middle school, where students do have independent book choices within a genre unit of study, whatever unit of study they're in. That's what I refer to with the AREs, with Assured Reading Experiences, that those are That's what I refer to with the ARES, with Assured Reading Experiences, that those are, students can choose independent books. There are, the libraries in the classrooms are leveled, meaning, they're not actually, each book is leveled, but meaning the book gets more sophisticated by which grade level, which library you're in. So if you're in a sixth grade classroom, you know, because of the content of some of the eighth grade books, there will probably be different books in a sixth grade classroom library than an eighth grade classroom library. It doesn't mean it precludes kids from the sixth grade library from reading more sophisticated texts, it just means that the wider range are more appropriate for what would be for a sixth grade reader, and the same goes for seventh grade and eighth grade. Students also have experiences reading common shared texts. So when it's a shared text, it's more of a short text. It could be a short story, it could be an article, it could be a poem, it could be a variety of texts. But students certainly have opportunities to share an experience reading a text, having a discussion about it, or writing about it, working in partnerships, working in small groups or book clubs, and also working independently.
Maybe a follow-up on that. What is the teacher's role when they're selecting independent books, or their own, I've forgotten what term you used, the non-shared books to read?
Independent reading book, I would call it. In some places, they call it an IRB, in some of the middle school classrooms. It varies. I think that students are guided towards certain texts. I mean, students are, teachers are constantly assessing students as readers through their conferences, through their shared experiences, whether, you know, through conversation or discussion in small group, and through that assessment, they get a clearer, or clearer sense of the types of books that would be good for a student in the class to read. They also get information from book logs, where students keep track of books that they read, so that they can use that information to guide students towards choosing books, whether it's in a different topic or a different genre. They're always trying to provide opportunities for students to read widely.
Do they have an easy way to assess how the student's reading?
So, we don't, I mean, I guess I can say, we don't have a common assessment that's administered to every student in the middle school. And for our students who receive reading support, we do follow the same, we use the Foulton-Simpenell Benchmark Assessment that they use K-5 for students who we've identified as readers who are struggling, and we need to provide additional support for. So in that circumstance, we do. Teachers do use, they have systems, you know, where they, a student they could pull alongside, a student, the student will read, they'll read a text, they'll ask questions. They do have ways that they assess them, but we don't currently have, like, a consistent middle school assessment tool.
Another question is about writing. How much, well, the main writing is the, what is it, five or six a year of Assured Writing Experiences? Is that the main?
So I'm going to say that those are our fully processed pieces of writing, and so I think that's an important thing to consider. I don't know if some, do you want, okay. So, yes. So, an Assured Writing Experience, it's important to distinguish between that and the everyday writing that happens in an ELA classroom. And so an Assured Writing Experience goes through a very, I want to say rigorous, process as students go through coming up with entry ideas, and then choosing an idea that they're going to draft, they draft it, they go through revision, they go, you know, they work, they get feedback from their teacher, it gets processed, and then eventually, it gets revised, edited, and published. And additionally, they write reading responses daily, and in some classes, they have, they have a multitude of writing experiences, but I would say the full, the full process writing pieces are the AWEs that they do through the year.
I'd forgotten, it's only been a year, but I'd forgotten about the reading responses. Is there, I don't know, do you have any sense of whether we're devoting enough time and resources to student writing? I mean, maybe that's kind of a, also a high school question, because I know this kind of feeds into the high school and students building the writing, and I think it's an area of concern, I just wonder what you think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, John, it's interesting to me, because somebody might look at this and say, goodness gracious, we've had those AWEs forever, and yet, we still hear some frustration around writing. So I think what is actually, has already started to help us and will continue, are the Common Core standards. One of the things that I notice in my position is, sometimes I'll walk into a seventh grade classroom, and I see a teacher doing a lesson, and then I walk into a high school classroom, and the lesson is not that different. And that's a problem, because it says that we're not articulated enough. You know, we've talked about that curriculum mapping piece? That's where it comes into play. So the teachers are doing the right, it's not that the teachers are doing the wrong thing, it's that we haven't articulated it enough. So I think that we would agree that that's where our work is right now.
Where articulation would be, kind of, the teachers in the different grades being mindful of what particular, I'm not going to use the word standard, that's not quite the right word, but parts of the goals they have for that grade, and make sure that students are trying to achieve that goal. Okay. Do you have any sense of how you assess, the same question I asked for elementary school, how you assess whether the Common Core is working? Is it just through the state tests, or are there just tests, or are there, I mean, how do we know? It's all great, it's, you're doing a lot of stuff, but how do you, how can you take a step back and decide, you know, how do you evaluate whether this is working? Is it just input-based, we're doing all the right things, so it must be working, or is there some way to evaluate it?
I would say quantitatively, other than the state assessment, I'm not, I'm not in a place to say that we do. I would say qualitatively, in terms of classroom observations, in terms of, you know, the routine of visiting classrooms, whether it be from an evaluative purpose, or for our instructional rounds, or, you know, we're in classrooms all the time, and so we're looking at certain behaviors, we're looking at certain student actions. How do students speak about their writing? How do students speak about their reading? What types of responses do I get when I ask a student a question about the purpose of their work? When I ask, you know, when I talk about a student, or listen to it, you know, three students talk about a math problem, and talk about their level of understanding, or why that problem is the way that it is? Those are the evidence, I think, that I have at this point, that there is, there is a shift underway, you know, and when you say working, I guess I, I stand back from that word and say, are we, are we making progress? And I would say, yes, those parts of the evidence suggest to me that we're making progress.
Progress toward meeting the, meeting the goals?
Toward meeting the standard, and toward getting, getting students to think and understand at a deeper level, to be more expert in the content, but also being able to make the connections between content areas.
Okay. All right, and the final question I have, in science particularly, I don't know how much it's, I don't, is there, it sounds like in science instruction, there's been something of a shift away from older methods of providing information, or getting students to learn, however that was, to, I don't know if it's text or textbook ways, are, because now you're, now you're being, you're saying you have to look at, to read text in order to learn things, and before, something else happened, right? There was, didn't you say there was a shift? And then, follow-up question is, are we, is there any separate way to evaluate whether that's having any positive or negative impacts on science education per se?
Well, I mean, I'll answer, I think maybe Randy and Joyce might want to add to my answer. You know, I wouldn't want you to walk away from this, saying that students are learning science differently, because now they have to read, and they didn't have to read before. I think, I think what the, the point was, was that in many ways, the way that students acquired information previously was more passive, and we want students to be more fully engaged, either with, with the information that text can present, or other vehicles.
Thank you, John. Maria?
First off, excellent presentation. I especially appreciate the time you guys took in putting in kids' examples at the various levels, because I really do appreciate that, it puts it more in perspective for me. Kind of dovetailing a little bit on what John was speaking about, within ELA and independent reading. So I gather that there's no more true assessments to see what reading levels they're at, but how does a teacher really know what is a good choice for a student, independent reading-wise, that they're getting pushed, and they're not taking the safe route and picking an easy book, because something else could be hard for them? You know, how are we making sure that they're, you know, at their level and being pushed?
So, I think that, I sort of answered it a little bit, so I'll add on to what I answered in the previous question. I think it's a, it's a matter of the time that teachers spend conferring with students. So when I say conferring, it means they sit with students, and they, they sit one-on-one with students, and they ask questions about what, the text that they're reading, you know, higher level questions, and also, like, sort of just write their questions to get to comprehension. It also has to do with the text that they use, shared texts. So if they're using a common shared text, and they're asked to do something, it's a teacher taking notes, and listening in, and figuring out, you know, where is this student? It's their written responses. How are they responding to the text that they're reading? So I think it's a, it's a combination of things that teachers are using for their assessment. Assessment happens to be a focus right now at the middle school for ELA teachers, so you know, if we ask this question at the end of the year or next year, you know, I would probably have, you know, more definitive, you know, this is what every teacher is doing. But I think right now, we're in the phase of saying, so what are you using for your assessment? What does your formative assessment look like? What does your summative assessment look like? For our units of study, for our ARES, we're talking about having common assessments. So I think that the assessment piece will help, and it does go back to your answer to your question, to what those independent book choices are. So I think sometimes it's a negotiation, because sometimes students pick texts that are, like, way too sophisticated, and maybe they need to pick one that's a little bit less sophisticated to build to that sophisticated text, and then sometimes students pick books that are, like, books that they read, you know, two years ago, and the teacher finds out, you know, they've read it three other times. And so I think it's a lot of asking a lot of questions, and using a lot of data for teachers figuring out what, how to, how to guide students in their book choices, and they teach into that also.
Okay, and then, the only other question I have is, a few years ago, when that half, that second period every day was added back in, does that still, you made a presentation a few years ago to the board, how that looks on a daily life? Has that changed at all, or are you finding new opportunities, having that extra time, supplementing some gaps perhaps?
Well, let me take, okay. So, I would say that it's used, so depending on where a teacher is in their units of study, I would say in the, when we originally got the double block every other day, we sort of had this clear sense in our mind that it was going to give us a reading period and a writing period every other day. And what we've learned is, depending on where the teachers are in their curriculum, there are some times where they find that they're spending the double block when they're in a reading unit, like, just immersing the kids in that reading unit, that they'll spend a double block in the reading, well, they'll give kids longer times to do independent reading, so teachers can do that conferring, and then they'll do the writing period on the alternate day. But it really depends where a teacher is in the unit of study, and by grade level. But the teachers really do, by grade level, collaborate, and I think you would find that they're doing pretty consistent things across their grade level with the reading and writing period, with the reading and writing block.
Thank you.
And it, you know, it did, I mean, I would say for writing support, it did open up an opportunity for us.
Absolutely.
So because we got the double block, on the opposite day of the double, of the block, we were able to put in a writing support class for students who've identified, been identified as a struggling writer, and that class is taught by the same teacher that student has in the double block ELA. So it actually has, which didn't exist before we got the double block. So from my perspective, that's been, like, a really good thing for our students.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
I would echo John and Maria, great presentation, and again, the examples were definitely, it's something I said.
Usually people get up when you start talking, Phil, so it's.
They were hoping you'd be your normal critical.
That's right.
Yeah, it was just nice to have the specific examples, so that was great. I really just had one question, and it's, I guess it's kind of a big one. It was great how you described the different anchor, this with respect to ELA, the different anchor standards, and in particular, I started thinking about this question with, all the way back, anchor standard number one, when it said in the, you know, header that we're asking our kids now to read closely, to determine what the text says explicitly, and to make logical, it's slide number seven, I think it is.
But it's several times.
Yeah, five, so I think it's just that. So what I'm curious about is, that seems like a very obvious thing, to be reading the text explicitly, and actually pull out textual evidence. What did we do before if we are doing this now?
Yeah.
It's actually slide seven, but it doesn't matter.
But it's anchor standard one, Phil?
Yeah, so it's.
Okay. See, the beauty part? Look at this, anchor standard one, it's the same, that's what we love about it, no matter where you go, it's the same. So I think, but I do want to go actually back to that one. I think what we were trying to get at is, you're right. I mean, that sort of doesn't seem like such a big new idea. What's different is, it's naming the build. So that's why we wanted to show you the progression, because one of the things around the ideas behind the Common Core, it remains to be seen, but one of the big ideas around the Common Core is depth over breadth. And one of the things I notice is, I will see teachers teaching something that's not at their standard, it's not at their, at their grade level, and it's because they think the kids should know it. What we want to do is, we actually want to start to force mastery. So what we want to say to teachers is, you don't have to get to here, because for your grade level, it's here. I want to just point out, from a differentiation point of view, what we don't want to do is hold a student back. But because the teachers can see, so if I'm a sixth grade teacher, I can see what's expected in seventh and eighth, so if I have a student who's really ready to go to that next level, there is nothing that precludes me from pushing that student in that way. But what we want to make sure is that every seventh grader leaves with that as the benchmark, as that as the baseline, and that's what's different. It's not that what we're asking for, it's, again, how we're naming it, and the progression, and the level of expectation for mastery is really the goal.
Seems that mastery and differentiation could be in conflict with one another.
No.
Say more. Well, say more, why, why you think that?
The idea that we're, we want kids to master to a certain standard before we encourage them to go on.
No, I would say, well, here's what I would say. I would say that teachers who are successfully, who successfully differentiate their instruction, they know the baseline. So here's the non-negotiable, we want all kids to get to here, no question about it, everyone's here, but I know where my kids are going, and therefore, I know how to take kids to here. So it's not that we said it, the mastery's not down here, it's here, and we go from there.
Good.
Or would it be that each kid has a different level of mastery?
That's what I was trying to get to, thank you.
Well, mastery.
Mastery might be different for student A and student B.
Mastery is what the standard says, and then we go above and beyond for any student who's ready. So again, in no way, shape, or form is our goal to say, okay, if we get to that, we're good to go, every kid's fine, that's not. But that's, that's mastery for that grade level, and we go from there. Does that make sense?
Well, I was just trying to get to the concept of differentiation with students', student ability, and how do we know when, what is the definition of mastery, and how do we, how does a teacher know when a student has achieved mastery, and therefore, they are allowed to move into sort of advanced work within the same class? And I guess I'm asking specifically with ELA, because it is more of a judgmental thing than it is, obviously, in math, it's a little bit clearer.
So through assessment. So formative assessment and summative assessment would be the two ways, we, also some pre-assessment. But the formative assessment, and when I refer to formative assessment, I'm talking about what Joyce referred to, and David, that conferencing along the way, the engaging, looking at student work. If I do a, if I ask kids to do a reader's response, and I ask them to, to provide us with that information, I'm beginning to see. So if a student is consistently giving us that standard, meeting that standard in grade six, cite textual evidence to support analysis, I know that student is really ready, and there's no reason why that student couldn't consider several pieces of textual evidence. So I think, again, it's that formative assessment. Did you want to add something?
Okay, I think I get it. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kern.
So, of course, I'm going to echo what they said. Thanks for the great presentation. Just have, like, two, two or three questions. It just seems like it's an awful lot of changes from a teacher perspective, and I guess it worries me a little, because it's a lot about what they're changing, but to me, some of it isn't not what they're teaching, but how well they're teaching it. So where does that fit into this equation from your perspective?
Great question.
So, let me just clarify, let me clarify what I think you asked. So you're saying, where are we? So you're saying, where are we talking about how the teaching is done? This is the what?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it seems like there's, all of our time and effort right now is spent on shifting and getting, and all the teachers, really what they're doing in the classroom looks pretty different than what they were doing, say, two years ago. So then at some point, I think, or I guess I'm wondering how you guys are approaching this, but how do you take a teacher, look, a mediocre teacher teaching this is, or, you know, you're better off with a mediocre teacher teaching this or a fabulous teacher teaching the old way. So how do we get, how do we raise the bar on our teachers if we're spending all our time shifting them to a new way of teaching? And I want to make sure that piece is in law.
So I'm going to move us to APPR. So one of the, some might call it a pro, some might call it a con, but as you all know, the APPR and the Common Core have been rolled out at the same time. One of the significant changes for us, and David referred to it, is how often we are in teachers' classrooms. So I would say the way that we're examining and studying and exploring pedagogy, making sure teachers, and really, I don't want to say making sure, but really supporting teachers in providing instruction in ways that we think are at the level that we would like to see in all classrooms all the time, is through observation and evaluation as well as professional development. So to me, those two, they go, they live in parallel worlds. I want to say they go hands in hand, but they're really parallel. Our professional development, while some of it is about the content, so much of it is about the teaching. And how do we teach this? And what do we have to change? And how do we best meet this standard? What's the teaching practice that has to happen? And if, did you want to speak to this? Go ahead.
And I would just say, I think one of the things that the standards have brought to us is this idea of a roadmap, so that when a teacher's planning instruction or when a teacher's reflecting upon instruction, this is a place to go. This is, so tell me, you know, when you're talking about citing textual evidence that most strongly supports, well, how will you know? And what do you, what skills do students need in order to be able to do that? And how is instruction directly leading to that? And what does your assessment look like? You know, I mean, I feel like what has come out of APPR, but also out of the Common Core, has been a richer opportunity for the conversation about the practice because we have the language that's common to all teachers in a way that I don't think we had before.
So you are, we are focused on this as well.
Yeah.
Okay. My next question is, it's kind of an, is this available? But since you're saying there's assured reading, and obviously reading and people are always like, what are they reading? Also concerned in the high school too, but is there a place where we could see almost a list or an outcome of, okay, here's what's required in sixth grade, here's what they're going to do in seventh grade, or is this the curriculum mapping?
Yeah, it is. It is. It's the curriculum mapping, and I think, and we are right there with you. I think it's the work when we talk, in a couple of weeks, when the high school administrators are standing up here with me. There's no question that we are, we need to name things in ways that right now they're not named. We definitely see that as part of our curriculum mapping initiative, no question about it.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you mean naming the text specifically so parents know, my kid's going to be reading Wuthering Heights this year?
In some cases.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got so excited about that.
Yeah, no.
I want to say in some, sir.
Right, yeah. What they're going to read.
I would say like, so that you, like, just if you were to go into the Common Core, you know, there are appendices which give some suggestions for different texts, but they're banded, so they're six, eight, so it doesn't really give you a sense. I think what we would think or consider at the middle school is providing, what are texts, like, at sixth grade level that, and I don't mean level, that sixth graders are reading, like, and then seventh grade and eighth grade. So you'd see a range of texts that students are reading, but I'm, but we wouldn't be saying that all sixth graders are going to read this book. But we could say that there's a short text or that there's an article so that you could have a sense. That's part of our mapping.
Assured ones we could say.
Yes.
Yeah, I think people would actually like to see that.
Yeah, I think so.
It would be helpful, like both when you have a kid going in and then also when your kid's coming out.
I'm going to clarify.
Can you clarify assured?
Yeah, I just want to clarify assured, because, so, an assured reading experience means that if we are, it's linked to assured writing. So there's a couple of different pieces, and I don't know, I think you noticed how one of the slides showed the yellow, and I don't know if you remember from the last presentation, that anything in yellow means that New York State added it. And one of the things that New York State added to the Common Core is reading widely. So the way the assured writing and reading experiences work is this. The assured reading is around a genre. It's not around a book. So informational, argument, so that means the teachers are using and reading, and the kids are reading texts that will help them ultimately to get to a writing experience where they become the writers. We use the, we use the reading really as mentor texts, so kids begin to understand what the writing could look like. In addition to that, we have named K through eight, reading widely genre. So for instance, in fifth grade, fantasy is a reading widely genre. We teach into fantasy and what is it, what do you need to know as a reader? So those are the areas where I think Joyce is referring, that we would be able to name texts. But where they're assured reading aligned to assured writing, we may or may not have a common text. So there might be a variety of texts so that you can understand, and certainly as a parent, you should know what your child is reading. But there wouldn't be a list, we would say in sixth grade as an assured reading experience, or in seventh grade, everybody's going to read, well, The Outsiders.
Okay. And then my, one last question is, I guess, given that it's such a breadth of changes, I was just thinking that maybe at the end of a year, or maybe even it's another year, is there any, have you guys thought about, maybe it's embedded, doing some teacher feedback, almost a reality check as to, okay, so what are you seeing from the kids that are coming? And, you know, what's working, what isn't? And I mean, how can we affect change for the better? Because I've often heard teachers kind of, you know, you know, little buzzes of teachers saying, well, this year's classes, you know, they didn't learn this, or that year's class. So I mean, do we kind of maybe formalizing this teacher feedback loop to take advantage of that?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, well, I mean, I was going to. I can give an example. So I'll use math as an example, because last year was our first year in Common Core-aligned units of study. And last year's experience, both with the assessment that they had to take from the state, but also really from where they found kids coming in and where they found the gaps between what the Common Core was expecting students to walk into, say, sixth grade with, and where they actually walked in, affected how they planned this year's. Also informed by what they knew fifth grade teachers were doing last year to get, to get students to that place. So I would say, at this point, our reflection is somewhat based upon the gaps that Raina had mentioned earlier on, where we know kids, the Common Core's been implemented in the midst of kids' lives, so they don't necessarily have that progression yet. But in terms of looking at our units of study in math and ELA, and then ultimately in other disciplines, I would say that would be a place where that feedback loop would come into play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kerner stole my thunder on my main question, but, I mean, I think that, you know, with respect to the Common Core, the biggest issue that I'm sure you folks have and commentators have, and I personally have, is that it's been imposed mid-cycle for kids currently in school. It's one of those things, if you're starting out with it, you're going to, you know, the progression's clear, but what do you do when you're imposing something on a sixth grader, for instance? Not having all of these paradigms and the language that builds up to where you are. And I've had, I've seen it firsthand in my house, sixth grader, fourth grader, now one in kindergarten, with, you know, them entering into this Common Core world at different points, obviously not the kindergartner, he's new. And frankly, the struggle of learning a new way of learning and adapting to the language. So I understand, you know, with the thought that this is troublesome, and how are we doing it, and how well are we doing it, I think will be a constant reporting back because, you know, now, I think you'll see how well it's working when you see the kindergartners start coming up through Dow's Lane into Main Street, and the trouble period is actually right now where it's being imposed sort of midstream for most of the students that obviously are currently in the district. Thank you again.
Can I ask a follow-up question? When would be appropriate for you to tell us more formally, sort of a progress report, to use David's, you know, word, progress? And I would hope it's not entirely dependent on the New York State testing schedule. It would be great to get something sooner than that, because I guess that would mean we would have to wait until next fall, because that's usually when you do your report card, I think, is kind of early October.
I guess what I would say is, you know, the problem is, well, what are our benchmarks? What does it mean to be doing differently or better? And I think that while we can debate, you know, the state assessments, what the state assessments do give us is a year-to-year measure. I use that word lightly because of the way New York State, as you know, keep shifting and moving us in terms of how we score and how they scale score. But having said that, I think certainly at the end of the year, I mean, I feel like we'll have anecdotal information, but I think it certainly takes more than a year. As we all know, learning, oh, it takes time. So probably one of the better measures is September, when the teachers get that next grade of students. That's probably the best time for us to get the feedback of what kids knew and were able to do. I think, I don't know if you remember from the K-5 presentation, some of those kid quotes. So even though the kids have some gaps, there's certainly a positive energy around it. I am curious to see next year for all of those teachers, starting in first grade and up, they should see a marked difference in what kids know and are able to do. So I would say, you said fall, September is fall, but early fall maybe.
I think I was also thinking that maybe a qualitative assessment, and, you know, of your choosing, but, you know, literally asking the teachers and gathering comments to provide us with feedback in a systematic way, I guess.
Yeah.
That might provide some.
I mean, we.
Early warning kind of, or maybe highlight all the great things that are happening.
We could definitely think about doing something like that, and again, I just take you to the K-5. If you remember, we included teacher quotes, and I think that you heard from their voices. They, you know, both the, I can picture the two big quotes that were in there, were very specific about what they are seeing. So we certainly collect, could collect that, but I do think it will be interesting in September to see teachers' response when they see that, the next group come in. We could definitely look at a way, you know, think about how we could do that.
I was just going to ask if getting parental feedback in any systematic way could, would be part of this process, or would that make sense to do? Because they're obviously knowing, you know, the perspective of what the kid's going through that you may or may not be seeing, you know, in various ways.
I don't know, I'd have to process that for a bit. Like, I'd have to really think through what that, like, it's not that it's not valuable, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what it would be, but.
I'm not either.
I do know that, I mean, you know, speaking as a parent, I think we do see things that, you know, probably the administrators don't see because we're talking to somebody who's in that class every day.
Right.
Unlike a classroom visit.
I think that's kind of true in general, right? I mean, not even Common Core-related. I think parents always have these insights that we don't, that we don't have. So I totally agree with that, John. I guess what I wouldn't want to do is frame it around the Common Core necessarily, but yes.
But, you know, I take this discussion as, really, we're having a discussion about ELA and math and associated things, and the fact that we're doing it through the lens of Common Core is just a reflection of the time, but our concern is about how the curricula are progressing.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
Great, thank you. I guess now I'd like to move to section 6.1, procedures for the community comment. I'm going to ask if anyone that has questions or comments regarding this presentation, if you can go first, please, so we don't have to have our folks stand up here too long, and then we can move to more general comments. Excuse me?
Do you have anything to add?
Yes, please. Thank you.
On this subject.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the Common Core presentation stuff out of the way first, please, and then if there's any more general comments.
Hi, you guys. Catherine Johnson, Irvington. Well, three things I was thrilled to hear tonight. I kept hearing the words content specialist, so that was great. I'm thrilled to hear that. Know and be able to do, Raina just said know and be able to do. I would love to see K-12 bring that. That was the old-timey idea, what students should know and be able to do. I love that, because knowledge is there. It's not just thinking and problem solving, it's knowledge. And then several references to disciplines and disciplinary thinking and so forth, which is, that would, for that to make a comeback would be a great thing. My comments, I have three comments about the reading program, and I see three really significant problems here. Three. The first is, there's a community values issue, which is the community wants their kids to read classics. I mean, they really do. You have, your board president mentioning Wuthering Heights, and you've just said no. I mean, basically you've said no. You've said, no, we don't have a reading list. You do not have an assigned reading list.
But no, but we didn't say no. We said that's, that, no. And, well, wait, who said no?
I think she's saying what I said. That's what I'm saying.
I heard no.
So I wasn't saying no to classics. I was saying that we don't have. We don't have an assigned reading list.
That's a no.
But that doesn't mean that students don't have opportunities to read classics in small groups, in book clubs, and in independent reading choice.
Okay, but I don't want to argue about it.
No, I don't.
You can talk to any parent out there, well, not any, but a lot of parents, I've spent years and years having, you know, discussions of this. Many parents want an actual list of books their children are going to have read. They're not going to read them on their own. You know, that line, no child ever reads Moby Dick on his own? They're not going to read Wuthering Heights on their own. They're going to read The Glass Castle. The Glass Castle is something they should read outside of school. I mean, that is simple reading level, you know. So anyway, that's a community values issue. And you five board members, you are the guys who set the values. I mean, that's how board, the board sets the values, the executives execute the values. So that really, you can just say, look, we want assigned reading. That's it. That's a community value. We want a list of classics, preferably a coherent list, you know, starts at A, moves to B, et cetera. Right? So that's number one, not to be taking up your time. The second thing is, there's a real issue here with quantity over quality. There's lots of research, believe it or not, on something called reading a lot, and that's what parents always think. And I thought for years, if you just read a lot, have your kids read a lot, they'll be good readers. That turns out not to be true. It's like any skill, you get to a certain level and you just plateau. Like, if you play tennis, you just play tennis every weekend, you actually don't get better. You just stay at that level. Kids actually need very direct, explicit instruction in reading at every level up to college. So Ed, my husband's a professor, Ed, these are NYU kids, they're very smart. They can't read John Stuart Mill. Well, they're good readers. He has to go line by line. My Mercy Kids, a New York Times article, have to go line by line. That's direct, explicit instruction. You have to do that a whole class. They have to all read the same thing, and you have to go line by line. Otherwise, you don't have the instructional time. It can take me a whole class to get through one op-ed with my Mercy Kids, who aren't dumb, they're perfectly bright kids. All right, so you need some whole class, you need the books. Last but not least, this is one thing I'm not hearing from you, and I just can't remember the standards well enough. I'm hearing too much focus on argument as opposed to comprehension, which goes back to, do they understand? So coming up with an idea and then supporting it with a text, that's fine, but you've got to start with summary, with summary. Do they understand it? Have they got the points? And can they summarize? Summarizing is very, very hard. By the way, lawyers, isn't, don't you think the hardest thing is writing the precis at the beginning of the, no?
For some.
Oh, well, I had lawyers tell me. For me, it's hard to boil something down. So, anyway, I felt like I needed to hear more on comprehension, are they actually getting it as opposed to, are they arguing? Anyway.
Thank you. And for the record, at University of Michigan, when I was there, we were able to read John Stuart Mill, but I just wanted to let Ed know that.
Can I just, just, I want to just follow up.
That's right.
You know, I think, my experience is only through one kid having gone through this, You know, I think, my experience is only through one kid having gone through this, but, you know, I did, I think we did have a sense of some frustration. There was a transition in the middle school, I don't know when, whether it happened two years ago or last year, toward less, and this was, this was my question on the shared text versus the non-shared text, but the fact that a student will face a shelf full of books with no particular guidance toward which are the truly worthwhile books to read, you know, is something I think that, you know, we as a family at least felt was a lack of last year, that, it does seem like there's room for, you know, steering kids to making, having the professionals make a judgment that these are the quality books, literature, or probably literature, and ones worth reading. And there's, there's something to that, and it is probably a value thing. I think there is something to be said for that in terms of the value.
And John, I would just say, I think we do agree with that. I think that one of the things that Joyce or David referenced was that this is, we're really focused on assessment, and we link that to assessment, really assessing what we're doing, how we're doing it, what kids are reading, is it appropriate reading? So this is clearly a topic that we are focused on.
But I'm not sure that, you know, Wuthering Heights is obviously not, probably not great appropriate, but, but it was in the University of Michigan.
That's right.
Or Pittsburgh, or wherever, but, but whatever it is, you know, I'm not sure that assessment's necessarily going to pick up whether, you know, there was, I don't know, the right, anyway. So it's a, it's a separate thing, but it's a thing of, I think, of value to a lot of people, and certainly was to us.
If I can just add, I'll-
Good feedback.
I'll just say that ironically, I mean, I, the statement Catherine made, is I can remember my mother making that many years ago about me when I was here, that she wanted a reading list for her son and couldn't understand back then why there wasn't like a reading list that was an assigned reading list, so that she knew her son would read these books by the time he graduated Irvington High School. So I think it's kind of a valid point, you know, 40 years later.
So it's longstanding.
Thirty-five years later.
The pencil wasn't invented back then yet, so they couldn't actually write. That's right. Are there any, no more jokes about Phil's age. Are there any other comments regarding the Common Core presentation? Are there any comments from the community about anything else on the agenda before we get into the business items? Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to the consent agenda now, which would encompass items eight, Section eight, nine, and 10. I would like to thank, as we always do, folks who are giving us donations and grants. I'd like to thank the IEF again. You've probably been inundated with emails and Facebook about the IEF's annual gala. I will be attending. I know my other board members will be attending, and I just ask that you consider attending as well and supporting the IEF, because all of the money that the IEF raises comes back to the kids in this district in grants like the one we're about to accept this evening. So it's my little commercial for the evening. No pressure. Can I get a motion to, or is there anything on the consent agenda we need to discuss and pull up?
I want to discuss one thing.
Okay.
I need to put it out.
Sure.
Item 10.
Item 10, okay.
Can I just, I don't know if it's on item 10. We're, we're going to follow this by a discussion of technology, and this-
Right.
Item is strongly linked to that. Is there any way we could, if it wouldn't inconvenience people, wait for item 10 till after we have that discussion?
The grant's already been awarded, so we're just accepting the grant.
Well, I don't think we were ever asked about this program, you know, it just came up, you know. It's an awkward situation.
Certainly, the board has liberty to handle it how they wish. We make decisions all day long about initiatives, and we certainly are going to have the conversation about this particular initiative as it relates to other things. I, I think in the matter of consistency of the business, I would see it being approved, but it's certainly board's choice.
Does other members of the board, Phil? You know, I think that we wouldn't normally get involved in the writing of a grant or the, you know, we have to accept the grant as a business matter, but-
Well, normally, you're right. However, I guess to John's point, this wasn't where I was coming from, but really, to John's point, you know, if you start to make a large commitment to one area of technology or the other, given that we have been asking about technology for a couple of years now, it would make sense to at least have a discussion about that publicly before a grant for a commitment to, you know, to then go forth with our students in one direction or the other. It just would make sense to have a discussion. It's kind of a little, the way it all worked out, it's a little untraditional, so.
I don't think there's a problem of just holding off on voting on that and having the technology discussion and then voting.
Yeah, I think it's a little untraditional, sort of tie the two together, but I'm fine with, with punting it until, until after the presentation. So can I get a motion to accept items 8.1 through 9?
10.
Through 9, 10, on the consent agenda?
Seven seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
If, John, you-
I was the second.
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
Five, zero. And we're going to reorder item 10 until after Section 11.1, which we will turn over to Dr. Harrison for his presentation now.
Say, as opposed to saying a presentation, a discussion.
Discussion.
So we as administration, me as your superintendent, acknowledge that the, the need for communication and dialogue on this topic. We recognize that there are shifts all around us, right? We were listening to Common Core presentations and extensive discussions about the level of change that's occurring in our classrooms. But when we think about our lives in general, when we think about technology and the role in education, I don't know if shift is appropriate. There's certainly evolution, some may even say revolution, as to the impacts that technology is and can have on teaching and learning. I can say that when we think about all that's happening in our schools, everything that's happening in our classrooms, technology and the discussion about the integration of technology has been, has been key and really centered of our focus. And in doing so, we're passionate about reimagining what our classrooms look like, thinking about how that perception of a classroom changes. John, I think in one of our conversations, you really poignantly separated the idea of instruction in technology and then the instruction of technology. So the idea of thinking about, well, what is the role, if we're going to talk about integration and fitting that into how our kids learn and the experiences they have, and then that other more traditional, direct instruction of how we're teaching our children to do things with technology, teaching, giving them a particular skill set, whether that's software or otherwise.
Technology and instruction, or instruction in technology.
Yeah. So with that said, we have to think about what that means to us. We have to think about how technology is going to impact our kids. We have to look at where that balance is. So in the past, I think there, it was pretty concrete in how we would think about the role of technology in schools. We talked about the number of computers in classrooms. We talked about opportunities kids would have to utilize certain software applications or types of research that they would be engaged in or with using certain technologies. We continue and will continue to talk about the types of traditional learning experiences that our children have. We offer computer programming at the high school. What does that evolve into? What other types of classes do we provide our children with to give them a direct skill set, or to give them experience in certain types of computer experiences, whether that's coding or animation? We have to consider those options. So when we think about transition, when we think about the change, we have to think about the role technology's having in our lives in general. And in doing so, I think we can all reflect on ourselves in, you know, the tools, devices that we have sitting before us and how, and how we all communicate, whether it's document sharing, whether it's texting, social networking, and other forms of media that influence our lives. We have to think about how those layers begin to make their way into the classroom. We have to think about the skills that we want our children to have, the idea for them to be resourceful, the idea for them to be effective communicators. So if we think about communication, well, how, what role does technology play in that? And how does that find its way into our classroom? So when we begin to identify the needs here, the need and the assessment, I think, is a little different from the types of conversations that we may have had in the past. And in doing so, I think we just don't sit there and we count the number of computers or do an inventory of particular classes, but we begin to think about how do we need to re-envision to change that perception of what a classroom begins to look like, to start to engage these other opportunities. So different than I think we would talk about a building project where we would outline particular steps and putting an addition on a school building, there, I think, a lot, there's a lot, there's a greater need for us to be more agile in our approach here, to consider the different technologies, the different resources that are available to us, and explore how those could impact teaching and learning. So if we think about all the references to curriculum tonight, so ELA, mathematics, science, and social studies, there's different implications for technology in each of those forms. So we have to think of the curricular connections here, the utilization, the platforms for device or an integration of technology. But then we think we also have to think about where we are from a teacher's standpoint. How prepared are our teachers to be able to utilize certain technologies, tools, devices, concepts in their instruction? So our approach, as I said, has been to be a little more agile, an approach where we want to plant seeds, we want to be able to explore how these different technologies or concepts can have impacts on teaching and learning. And from those experiences, those trial runs, those tests, we're able to step back and make informed decisions about the role those opportunities, those devices or experiences can have in future learning in our schools, its role in curriculum, identify opportunities for growth, and identify particular needs that our teachers may have in the area of professional development. In doing so, I don't think it's a situation where you're putting a carpe for a horse, but it's leading us to be able to have informed decisions. If we were in a position where we're saying that we were going to look to a one-v-one initiative district-wide, and we were one device per child, and we were looking to make investments of wanting to purchase several hundred or thousand devices without having trials and experiences with our students, our staff, and our curricula, I believe we would be a little short-sighted and would risk making some errors at that point in time. So we are planting seeds. We're exploring what these opportunities can bring to us, and, and I think in doing so, we're in a position that we are preparing for next steps, where we're going to be able to engage other people in the use of our think tank and reinvigorating those efforts and re-engaging those folks, as we invited them to the discussion last year, and to create a well-articulated plan that will map out technology growth, technology implementation district-wide for years to come. With that said, I'd like to ask Raina to jump in and maybe talk about some of the specific initiatives that are going on and how we see the impacts leading to the scope of the broader plan that we will develop.
I guess I would just, to build on what Dr. Harrison said, is I think we're trying to dip our toe in a lot of different areas, and I think the commitment, and I think we've heard that from our community as well, is that we want to grow our use of technology, our perception of how technology gets used in the classroom. How do we design our instruction to embed technology? So I'll start with Dowslane. We were fortunate last year to get a grant from the PTSA for iPads, and we'll be piloting with a classroom in each grade level, a pilot program for using the iPads. And how can we make use of those iPads? So those, that was something we got last year as part of a grant, and we're excited because we want to see, while teachers have been using them all over Dowslane, we're trying to actually create a plan that would give us back enough information. Do iPads work in the elementary classroom? Are they helpful? Is it, what, is it the right tool? Do we need a set of iPads? Do we need a few iPads in every classroom? How do we work with our, the wire, with the internet access? How is that if we're going to be using different apps? So part of it is exploratory for us. So in that way, this, this other grant is, it mimics what we're trying to do at the elementary school with the iPad. The other thing that we've already is in, sort of in, in motion, I'll call it, at the middle school, is this whole idea of how do we support students who have organizational needs? And one of them is with this I-do model, where there have teachers who are assigned to kids, who are helping kids to organize themselves, their work, their files electronically, so that these kids are not carrying around binders with things falling out of them, where their files are stored in a common place, and teachers are helping to teach kids how to do that. Because while kids know how to use technology, they don't necessarily have the organizational skills to organize themselves. So that's another example, and for that, we're using, it's BYOD, Bring Your Own Devices. So for that, our goal is to have kids using their own devices. We wouldn't be supplying a device, but what we want to give the kids is that layer of, how do I make use of this device? How does the technology support me as a learner? Today, we actually had an amazing day. Thank you, Jesse is here. We met with the teachers who are piloting or experimenting with flipped classroom. So I don't know if any of your children are in any of the classrooms where teachers are creating the content, kids watch their, a video of the teacher or of the content at home, and the active learning is with the teacher. So rather than a teacher lecturing and then kids going home and doing the work outside of school where they need the teacher the most, they get the content outside of school, and now it's active and engaged learning in the classroom, where teachers are providing the level of support that all kids need. And one of the, there were so many things that I could share from today, but one of the things that more than one teacher said, and this is middle school and high school, was, "I can't believe how much better I know my kids." I mean, that was really a surprise, that we didn't expect. So while we're using technology, and they're using all kinds of technologies, Jesse can expand on that, really what we're talking about is instruction. So the Chromebook grant, it's no, it's really no different than a lot of these other initiatives that we have, that we have launched. We're trying to understand, how does technology, how do we move technology in our district? How do we make it so that, it's so seamless that it would never require a conversation like this, because it's an expectation, it's part and parcel. So the Chromebooks are an amazing resource for a lot of different reasons. One thing where we've agreed on is, there's no one device anymore. It's not like, you know, 10 years ago where we were going to be a Windows environment or we're going to be a Mac environment. Those days are long gone. That's not what we're about anymore. There are too many devices. Every kid walks into school, especially at the high school, with a phone. Their, the technology is with them. We need to catch up, we need to make sure that we're building our instruction. So this isn't about Chromebooks, it's about instruction. The other piece that we're, that's the other half to the Chromebooks is the Google Apps. So why don't I let Jesse just talk about Google Apps for a second, because I think it would be helpful.
Jesse, can you go to the microphone, please? Thanks.
Do I need to introduce myself, or? So, yeah, it's interesting, as you're hearing us go through the list, or hearing Dr. Harrison and Raina go through the list, there's, it sounds like there's a lot of balls up in the air at once, but in reality, they all kind of tie together. And at least with the Chromebook piece, Google Apps is really kind of the framework that made us decide to jump out in that direction. It was one of the factors. But for those of you who are unaware, Google Apps, and if you have a Google account, you're familiar with what kind of comes with that, your Google Drive, where you can store files, what used to be called Google Docs, Google Spreadsheets, Presentations now includes Google Plus, Google Hangouts, things like that, can be managed at the school level. So essentially, we get our own internal domain, and we can assign students and teachers accounts within that domain that are protected. We can essentially set restrictions as to what pieces they can access, so we can control that down to like the building level, whether we want certain pieces to be rolled out to certain grades and so forth. A Chromebook, do you want me to talk a little bit about how the Chromebook ties in? So the Chromebook, for those of you who aren't familiar, and actually, there's one, Gary, do you mind holding that up real quick? A Chromebook has the form factor of a laptop, but isn't, yeah, thank you. But isn't a true laptop in nature, so it's essentially a lighter version, it's not quite a Netbook. It's flash, memory-based, so it doesn't actually have a hard drive. And really, the key piece of it is, with a laptop, for instance, and with laptop cards that we already have that exist, when they go from classroom to classroom, there's that time factor of having to bring a laptop in, get it to the classroom, turn it on, have it start up, even whether it's Mac or Windows, it's the same thing. And with these, they're almost like an iPhone, where they're instant-on, instant-off devices that tie directly into your Google Apps accounts. So as we started to look at the different devices and realized that we were already in the direct, heading in the direction of wanting to provide our students with Google Apps accounts, it made sense to move to a device where we can tie those two initiatives together. So we can tie it together, wow, we have these devices now where students can actually be using the instructional tools we're putting in their hands, which they can actually access that information from anywhere in the cloud, and have them using them in class for the duration of a full class period. So if you look at a lot of districts who have moved to Google Apps, they've started to head in the direction of Chromebooks, because it overwhelmingly supports that piece of it.
But using Google Apps is not dependent on a Chromebook?
No, you can use other devices, but an iPad, for instance, wouldn't allow you to use the full suite of tools that you'd have available via Chromebook, or even via a full-priced laptop. But if you look at the cost, the cost of those models, they're significantly higher. And, I mean, there's other factors, I don't know how much, you want me to talk about Parker considerations like that?
I don't think so.
Somebody brings in their MacBook Air, I mean, they can access Google Apps just like some of the Chromebooks.
Well, I think one of the key pieces also is, as we talk about BYOD, the goal is to be able to have students using their own devices. This is, this is almost like, not a supplement, but we think it's something that ties in beautifully with that. So we're not saying students have to come in with Chromebooks, or, we're saying this initiative, at least for what we're looking to do, Chromebooks work perfectly for what we've mapped out as a pilot.
So in thinking of the variety- So, in thinking of the variety of things, thank you Jesse, that Raina and Jesse spoke of, we're looking at these as experiences that will inform future thinking, that'll be able to guide us to make bigger, long-range type decisions. So, we look at the experiences with tablets, we look at experiences with Google Drive or Google Apps, we look at the experience with Chromebooks. And by following the teachers that are engaged, by having focus groups with the children that are utilizing these devices and these new environments, we're going to be able to collect information that informs the direction that we're going to go. So, when we think to, next week, we have our next think tank meeting, and there, that's the type of conversation that we're going to start to have, is how do we start to re-envision what classroom looks like? How do we start to change that perception? And start to have three different types of conversations. And during that evening, we're going to focus on, what can we think about instructionally? How can these types of experiences, the information that we can collect from these individual pilots, how can that inform our thinking, help us develop long-range plans? Another lens to look at this is to also think about our teachers here. There's great opportunities that we've already started to engage in, an example of shared service in and around technology, and something that Jesse has been very heavily involved in, is the creation of essentially a professional development consortium around technology. We're occurring within River Towns, the Quad Villages, put together offerings, meeting what teachers' needs are based upon surveys, looking at the expertise that existed in-house among our school districts, and now our teachers have access to free professional development through this consortium. So, where we have to think about, well, we started there, well, what other types of support structures do our students need, big picture? Our teachers need big picture to be able to enhance the use of technology in our classrooms. And then the third conversation related to that is, well, we have to start to think about policies, we have to start to think about protocols. Jesse referenced the acronym BYOD a couple times, Bring Your Own Device. Well, if we want to start to move into a broader-scale direction where we want to consider potentially encouraging students to have their own devices in school, if we want to provide more devices for students to use in school, what are those protocols? What are the norms of the school, the types of business that we should be engaged in? What types of controls do we have for our children? Are there limitations that we put in place in the access that they're able to have in the school district? What type of access do we even want to personal devices at that point in time? So, there's a scope of conversation to have around those areas. And we see that as a launching point for those discussions, beginning to utilize the experiences that we're having from the variety of pilot programs and initiatives that we've discussed. End of the day, this will result in the creation of a longer-range technology plan where we would map out the direction that we need to go or we would like to go as we re-envision the classrooms. I think tied to that is discussion about technology leadership. Quite honestly, it is such a part of our students' lives and needs to be a part of their education that we need to have a greater commitment to the leadership in that area. So, if that is someone that is in classrooms modeling for teachers, someone that's in the classroom engaging students in new technologies or new methods of learning involving technology, how do we do that? If that is looking at long-range planning as far as instruction, or looking at things as, from an infrastructure standpoint, how are we doing that? We have limited resources. We have Jesse, who is our CIO, we have Jesse, who is also our technology coordinator. He's wearing multiple hats at once. So, we have to begin to think about how we can invest our resources differently to be able to promote the development of the plan that will be created later this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the board? Want to start, maybe start at Robin this time?
Start with me?
Why not?
You wouldn't start with me, but you can if you want. You want to start? You want me to start?
Either way. I'm happy to start if you want.
You go ahead, because you might cover some of mine.
Okay, or I suppose we could start in the middle.
Yeah.
Somebody start.
I can start.
Okay.
Mine is simple. I think these sound like exciting initiatives, and it's great that you'll be getting some important learning from these experiences. I think what the board needs, and I'll say myself specifically, is an understanding of what goals or what opportunities or problems we're trying to solve for. Because I think that it's great to be moving agilely, it's great to be testing, but even when you're testing, you know what the problem is. And I think if we can state the problem more clearly, or the opportunity more clearly, more formally, and that becomes the beginning of the plan. So, in a sense, you know, it's almost like, because you've already started the testing process, you kind of have to retroactively define what the goal and the problems are that created these tests. Because clearly, these tests didn't come out of, you know, thin air. I think being clear about that is really important. And that's because we have to know what success looks like at the end of these tests. We have to know, what does it mean? How do we know that the Chromebook project was successful? Because that is going to tell us that we're going to either spend a lot more money on more Chromebooks, or we're not going to continue that, we're going to move on in another direction. I think the, defining what those success metrics are, are really important, even as you're thinking agilely and testing things. Finally, I guess I would say with respect to Chromebooks, the Chromebook project specifically is that, you know, it's easier for us as a board to understand the wisdom of that particular project if we understand all these other things that I just described. It's very hard for us to get excited about one particular project if we don't know what are the other projects that we could have been pursuing. You know, that's, again, the idea of testing is that you have a bunch of different things you want to test, and then you say, well, we're going to just focus on this test, and we're not going to bother with these other tests. And I guess my last point, and this will be very fast, is just, I think, a lot of what we're trying to solve for is in the instruction side, how we teach our kids. A lot of the tests will improve the use of technology in the instruction process, and that's obviously a great thing. That presumably would be one of the goals or opportunities we're trying to realize. The other piece that's very important is, what's the curriculum itself? In the sense that, how do we expand our technology curriculum into more and more sophisticated computer programming? Ultimately, improving instruction is going to help the overall education of our students, but there's also an entirely different initiative, which is, how do we improve the actual curriculum so that our kids are better prepared in the STEM courses to become engineers when they go to college? It's an unfortunate reality that STEM is driving engineering, which is driving careers, and careers that are lucrative and exciting at the same time. I'm not so sure that our initiatives right now are focused on that particular opportunity. And I would love to see that as part of our technology, our approach to technology in the classroom and our technology curriculum.
So, I guess, just a couple of, just quick thoughts, just fill in response. One is, I think it's the ongoing dilemma of a technology curriculum and using technology like we use paper and pencil. So, part of our goal in some of these is, really, technology is ubiquitous, should be ubiquitous at this point. It's almost when we sit here and we talk about it as such a separate thing in and of itself, our kids are walking in every day with technology, and it's going to, our goal, or we think it's going to be at a point where, it's not going to matter if we're supplying the Chromebook, except for that for a child who may not be able to afford one on their own, or how we do any other supply. Because the reality is, the kids are walking into school with the tools. So, for me, the biggest piece of what you're talking about is really, how do we make sure our curriculum is moving kids, is getting more girls involved in science and math, like all those things that we know are out there? So, it's not about, the hardware is a piece of it, but really, when we envision or vision, us buying all this technology becomes the least of it, really, the piece is what you're talking about, which is the curriculum. So, we wouldn't be talking about which pens or pencils are we buying, we'd be talking about, what is it going to look like? How are we really going to change our instruction? And the flipped classroom model is, I mean, we are leaders in the county right now in this model. I mean, clearly, we got that feedback. It is, we are looking forward to say, how do we change it? How do we engage kids in a different way? And quite honestly, in a way, that's the reality of their lives right now. So, I think we're on the same page, so I understand what you're saying about naming it. I mean, I would say to you, and I'm not sure if you have the IEF grant in front of you, but the IEF grant, the goal is really about changing the perception of what classroom instruction looks like. It's not about the hardware anymore. I don't think we can talk about the hardware anymore. We have to talk about instructional design, and what our teachers are doing, and what our kids are doing, and what our curriculum is putting forward and out there for kids to move in exactly the direction you're talking about. So, thank you.
Can I add one, a couple things, but I'm going to, I'll save them. The one, when you had talked about the goals and defining success, you know, in the long-term, you know, I also think the thing that would help us as a board is a timeline associated with that. It's very amorphous now. And, you know, goals, are we talking five years? Are we talking two years? So, I think, to just piggyback to what Phil said, I would say it also layer in a time factor onto your request.
Yeah, although, I mean, to be fair, I think it also ties into the long-range plan that we're planning on doing, and I think a lot of it has to do with that. I mean, our goal was, for the administration in the district, was to first assess where we are with technology, and then secondly, to come up with a coherent plan for moving forward. And, so, I think it does work into our own long-term planning as to what we want the classrooms in Irvington ultimately to look like.
Yes and no. I mean, I think, and then this ties in also to what you just said too, but, you know, me, perhaps, the long-term planning is the Chromebooks and the Bring Your Own Device and all those pieces, but frankly, you know, what can we do in September that can affect change for the kids in our school today? And I'll give you a few examples. Last year, I have a child who's in ninth grade, as do a few others on the board, and he was told by the powers that be, I don't want to get more specific, oh, there is, you know, going through, what are the electives? Oh, well, there is a computer programming, but frankly, it's really not a great class, and it's been here for so long, and I don't even know what they do, and I don't know what it is, so I don't even know if you should look at it. Okay. I put forth to you that I really would like to see in this, between now and the end of the year, some attention paid to that, so that frankly, at least the administration has confidence in what they're offering, and they're not telling the kids those kinds of things, or, you know, I mean, so that's a short-term thing.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have you previously told the administration about that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a short-term thing. I mean, but how could we affect change? I don't think we need to wait until we have this long-term plan to affect things they could be doing. You know, another, and this is, again, I'm using this as an example to say, short-term is, you know, my child came home this year and said, oh, we were pulled out of school to do a coding for a day. I'm like, coding for a day? And he said, oh, yeah, you know, the person who was teaching it didn't know anything about it, it was one period, I don't know why we did it. So, again, I guess, you know, I guess, can we maybe at least, putting aside the longer-term, what you're saying, you know, approach, but can we at least come up with a coherent strategy that we are implementing sooner that will affect the kids in the class instead of what I'm kind of witnessing as a parent, which is, you know, it's not there. And the last piece is, the Project Lead the Way, and this I just found out, I just heard from some seniors, that one of their regrets was that they were all excited to the Project Lead the Way classes, which are the engineering sequence in high school, that we, as a board, agreed to adopt when Scott Mosenthal was here. And this is three-course sequence. And the beauty of it is, for the, you know, STEM kids and to get them involved in engineering, well, the lament of the seniors were, well, I've never been able to take part two because it was never been offered because there weren't any kids. Well, I, as a board member, was not aware of that, which is interesting because the whole beauty of the program was to offer a sequence. It wasn't, well, we're going to offer one engineering class as an elective and leave it like that. So, I guess I would challenge you to figure out a way to come up with a strategy for allowing kids to continue that elective, obviously, maybe not teaching it in a traditional classroom, but how can you start something like that and then just let it go, and then sit here talking about long-term plans and Google Books? So, like, I really think we got to break it down into short-term and long-term, and figure out ways that the kids currently in high school are going to be positively affected, and not necessarily, you know, five years down the road when we are longer along the process with this stuff. So.
Can I jump in?
If I, if I may, Maria, that I think exactly what we're doing is looking to effectuate change with impacting instruction with the use of technology now by having pilots, and rather than just creating a plan and hoping that it's going to work, that we're going to have, from these experiences, real opportunities that are going to be released in September. That is the idea of doing this now. The idea is to be able to have these experiences, to have these experiences, our teachers and kids engage in these experiences, so we can then turn and begin to roll these things out broad-scale next year to impact kids. The examples that you brought up are things that certainly need to be addressed, I'm not going to deny that. Those things, if we're talking about the communication in and around computer programming, or the sequencing with the Project Lead the Way engineering courses, those are things that we can look to address administratively. Coding experience that happened, and a national initiative, we posted some information about it, there could have been better articulation from either the schools or from other folks communicating and setting a different type of purpose for it, so folks could appreciate more of what was happening. We are going to look for deliverables. Our objective is going to be to have impacts in September, whether that is looking at coursework, that's looking at how impactful, whether it's teachers, counselors, administrators are going to be on this front, but also to start to transform what that perception is in a classroom, and the role that technology has in our kids' learning. I think we're saying the same thing with a different approach. And I think if you look to Raina, Jesse, or me, when you were saying those things, I felt like, a lot of like, wanting to nod and saying, yeah, we get it, and that's kind of how we're doing it now and why we're on this approach. Maybe the approach looks a little different, but I think our end game is going to be similar, and it's going to be ambitious, and it's going to have benchmarks and goals for the things that we want to achieve over the next couple of years, with implementation of particular things for September, without question.
Okay. What I see here, actually, are two very different things. I think that some of the examples you brought up and some of the things that I think we as a board have been asking about is technology curriculum. That, to me, is separate than the Chromebooks, the flipped classrooms. These are initiatives on how to support and kids learn in different disciplines. Am I wrong here in my understanding of all this? So, I feel like it's two different conversations, and quite frankly, two different presentations, I think. I'm excited, I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I feel like it really needs to be a presentation because I have so many questions. For example, I don't have any kids in the flipped classroom. You know, reading this little blurb, you said, you know, based on the, you know, success with the first group, you're going to roll out in some more teachers in different grades are going to be doing this in the spring. I don't get still what a flipped classroom is. Get the use of the Chromebooks, but as a board member, I need, and I know it's not anyone's fault because it's on the agenda and we scheduled it for later on in the year and other things are taking higher priority, but I think the disconnect for me is, we haven't had a presentation yet to really fully understand all of these different ways, that's how I'm looking at it, at reaching the kids and teaching social studies, science, like, because theoretically, that's what you could be doing, the flipped classroom, in various disciplines, math, ELA, whatever. You know, Google Apps as well, that could be used in different subjects. So, I appreciate this discussion, and it did clarify a lot of the questions I had about the use of the Chromebooks, so I'm excited about that grant. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the use of the iPads at Dowslane, but I feel like it's two different discussions and two different presentations.
And just to clarify, Maria, flipped classroom, I would say today was the first day that we would even be ready to share anything publicly. You know, when you do something, I mean, we could have teachers who came on board. I don't think any of them would have come on board if we said, in October, you need to be able to come in and present. So, I mean, you know, that's, part of this is a lot of new learning, and so certainly we could help you to understand what it is, but we watched seven teachers today present and presented. and every one of them, it looks a little bit different. It's almost like saying, come in and show me how you teach ELA or how you teach math. Everyone, it could look different. It is the use of technology in a different way, so we're happy to share it, but I don't, we just, we're just there. They've only been doing it for two months. So you know what I mean?
And I'm not even talking about the success for it. I use that word because it, because you said it's...
They just learned how to do it.
But what I'm saying is, is even the concept of a flipped classroom, like clearly that came from somewhere. You want to test the waters and I get it, like you're going to use different initiatives. For example, let's say the Chromebooks, it might not work out. Hey, you tried something, now we're going to try something else. And I'm not saying it's not going to work, but what I'm saying is, is you're trying different things and I guess from my perspective, I just want to know a little bit more about all of your thoughts and what you're trying. Not whether or not it's successful because I get you need time, but I just want a clearer understanding of the different initiatives you're taking on that part and then a separate discussion about technology, K-12, what it looks like, you know, what we're offering, how Gwen's now back at Dow's Lane in Main Street, what does that look like? What is that? You know, just different things.
Absolutely.
John?
John?
Yeah, well said, everybody. Thanks. It's a really interesting, I don't think we want to get, I don't want to kind of elicit a lot of more discussion on this because I'm just sensitive of time and the lateness of the hour, but, so I'll just kind of tell you what's on my mind and hopefully we'll get to the stuff as we go. You know, we have a district goal this year that reads, assess the use of technology in instruction and develop a coherent K-12 technology curriculum action plan and begin implementation where possible. I think in the note you passed out, there was some sense that this somehow spoke to that. Certainly my view, it does not speak to that. We're not, you know, any, we're not at the point of any coherent discussion of what should be the goals of our instruction in technology for kids. What does a graduating 12th grader, what should they know for sure or what should they have the option of learning, should they go down particular tracks for college, career, whatever? You know, we don't have anything like that. And, you know, it's, given the changes that you all have talked about it, I think it's really critical to nail that down, even if it's not always going to stay static year to year. We really ought to nail down a coherent approach to that and really begin to move with great speed toward getting to put our instruction where it needs to be, probably especially in high school, but working backwards as well. The, you know, my concern about the different initiatives, and I think the letting a thousand flowers or a hundred flowers, whatever the number of flowers was, it's ancient history now, bloom is a great idea, but, you know, I'm a little concerned that there's an element of, despite what Chris said, putting the cart before the horse, in a different sense of the word, which is that we're really making, I think in this, the adoption of technology the goal in and of itself, rather than a means to other, possibly a means to other instructional goals. You know, technology is a set of tools, right? And it's true that most kids presumably have used technology at home in various ways, but what is, what I'm not hearing is, the question is, how is the technology making our instruction more effective or better or improving it in some ways? It's more, here's a bunch of tools, we got to figure out how to use them, just almost for their, I'm not saying it's for their own sake, but it has a little bit of a flavor of that. We got to adopt because technology's out there being adopted, maybe, but I'd like to hear why.
Isn't that a little contrary to what you said previously where they need to do the assessment to figure that out? I mean, I don't, we're not adopting things really district-wide, where they're doing assessments to see what works.
It might be, it might be, but let me just, no, but it's not, that could be, but I almost think, I think some other people have said, we almost need to back up and ask, what is the point, what from an instructional point of view are we after here with these things? It's almost like the old thing we had with Smartboards, however many years ago that came into the district. I want to say it was nine or 10 years ago, 11 years ago maybe. And there was a lot of, you know, here's this great tool, but how did it affect or improve our instruction? I know some teachers were really good at it and did really cool things. Did it make them better teachers? I don't know. Some didn't do much with it. So there's still, you know, I feel like there needs to be more there and look forward to hearing more because I haven't heard it yet. You know, how are these, I'd like to hear more about how these different initiatives, these pilot programs are evaluated. I'm very eager to hear about what the evaluation of flipped classrooms is. You know, I'm somewhat concerned about that model. I'm concerned about the idea that there is this sort of static, one-way lecture and I'm not sure that's really reflects what really happens in a lot of classrooms where students might hear information, have questions, interact with the teacher. I'm not sure. So, you know, it would really be helpful to have a better discussion of that. I think in our family, we do have a little bit of experience with it, but I don't really know much about what those experiences were.
If I could just jump in, how do you evaluate it? What are the mechanisms? Is it feedback from the kids? Is it test scores? Is it, I mean, what are those?
Yeah, yeah.
There's got to be some way of getting the feedback in order to know whether it's working.
Right. And test scores, problem is test scores, you're not going to get good information, but yeah, absolutely right. Well, how do we, or at least a recognition that we, you know, if it's not knowable, fine, we need to be upfront that it's not something where we can get a good hard answer for. The only other, well, a couple other things. One is in Bring Your Own Device, an obvious issue that'll come up with Bring Your Own Device will be issues of equity among, and it's all, technology is already an issue of equity. Different students will have different levels at home or whatever of access to technology and that raises issues that obviously need, I think need to be part of the discussion. And I want to just disagree respectfully with one thing that, the flavor a little bit of one thing Maria said, but I think it's a matter of personal taste. I don't feel we necessarily need to wait to have a big, well-developed presentation and all this stuff. I'm eager to get this information in small pieces if you can give it to us in that way, if you want to give us a short thing on one subject or a short thing another. I'm a little uncomfortable that this all has to wait till whenever our big technology presentation is scheduled for and then we will feel like we don't have enough time because we have two or three big presentations in one evening. And these are important subjects and I hope, this is, I think we all agree, this is a very, very important subject. Everybody in the room agrees in that and we need to really get into it in a lot of different ways.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I think most of, we certainly seem to feel similar on some of the big issues, but my, just, I'm excited that you're doing a follow-up to the tech think tank, but I did actually get a few calls about it and I just wanted to, you know, the timing of it is four to seven and I know that's a hard time and I'm wondering if you don't get a huge response, maybe you consider, I'm assuming moms have a hard time at that point and people who work are probably not back, so I guess if you don't see a good response, maybe you can consider trying to find a time that might attract more people. I don't know. So.
When is that scheduled for?
We received that feedback.
It's next week, but it's from four to seven PM, I think on Thursday.
Well, because you also have a critical mass of teachers.
Yeah.
So it was a balance in trying to accommodate community members and...
I mean, teachers volunteering to come, it's not, but I don't know that teachers are going to come from six to nine. So, and to do this work, you need teachers.
I need real estate and teachers because when we built the first one, it was mainly community members, right? Were teachers there too?
A lot of teachers.
See, I don't even remember that. Okay. Well, anyway, that was just, I just know it's a hard time for most parents because of, you know, the obvious, but...
Is there any document or video or any sort of record of that, the first one? I mean, what, how do we get information on what happened there? What was gotten out of it? Or was it simply a discussion?
Yeah, it was a discussion. I mean, we have notes that we're actually using for the next one.
It's a lot of small groups, so other than the notes, I don't think there's any...
I mean, the goal for the next one is to actually walk away with sort of a structure and an outline for then what we would expand on to...
And again, this is, as John said, this is more of my observation, especially with the budget season coming up and it's to underscore something that you just brought up, which, you know, it just seems like there's so much here and if it's important to us and we really as a district need to commit our resources to it, and the more time I spend thinking about it, then the more I keep coming out and like, yeah, maybe, you know, we really, like everyone always says, well, you know, if you want to educate, you hire an educator and if you want to bring the technology and maybe we really need to look at bringing in some additional support from a real tech guru to help inform with all this. You know, I mean, on PR, if we need, you know, we're getting outside help if we need with the PR, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't, I would almost make this more important in PR than less important. So again, I really think we, personally, I think when we're looking at our budget for the, and this is my personal, I'm thinking that if we really want to do this and do it right, it wouldn't hurt to have more resources at our disposal to help make it better, just in terms of a commitment from the district. So that's kind of one of the things I'm thinking of as we're looking toward the budget for this year, personally. And then I guess I just had a question though, and I don't know how you view it, but you talk a lot about professional development for teachers and is, how do you weigh the investment of resources today, time and money of our teachers versus, you know, potentially going down roads they won't necessarily need? I don't, like, with the professional development for technology, is it just general that you think they're going to use no matter what direction they're going or are they getting specific things that we might not, you know, we might not decide to go that route as you're looking at all these options? I can't picture that right now.
I guess the shift, and again, you know, I mentioned the idea of there was a time where you had to decide if you were going to be a Windows platform or a Mac platform. I wish it were so simple that we could say, you know, I would say years ago when I was the coordinator of instructional technology, K-12, we would decide, okay, we're going to, we're going to do Windows and we're going to teach everybody Word, Excel, and PowerPoint and everybody's going to use those products. It so doesn't look like that anymore and it shouldn't look like that. And so when you see the kinds of tools that these seven teachers, different tools that they were using, it's just, it's just not so simple. There's not one thing we're teaching, we're trying to do just-in-time training where the teachers were trying to figure out what makes the most sense, what tool, and then make sure that teacher knew how to use that tool. So we expose teachers to multiple things and then let them decide which one makes sense. So this is going to, may sound silly to you, but I think it's a good example. There was one teacher who was just starting out and she wasn't so comfortable with, she didn't want to be on the screen talking to the kids, so she used a different method. She used a different system, she used a different kind of software than someone else, a teacher who was very comfortable and was very willing to engage in their video to kids. So I wish it were simple that there was this box of tools that we could roll out and teach everybody, but technology is, it's everywhere now and so I hear what you're all saying and I agree and I want you to feel like you know, I really do, but the reality of being able to measure, we no longer have a choice. We need to figure out how technology is going to be a living, breathing part of our classrooms. It's not an option anymore and we, so we want to name it and give the examples, but I don't know that we're going to ever be able to wrap it up tight and put it in a box and put that bow and say, every teacher in Irvington does this or can do. What I can say is we want to engage kids, we want to make sure that our kids are engaging in the content and through that content, they're learning all of those skills, those collaboration skills and those critical thinking skills. And technology is one way that we're thinking and learning how to make use of it because that's what our kids know and understand. So you hear my passion around it because I am passionate around it. I so believe in it, but it's not going to be measured. I don't know. What I will tell you and we will share, and actually, it would be something, Chris, I'd be happy to give you for this week's update, I'm going to give you the quotes of what I wrote today as I listened to the teachers talk about how their classrooms have changed and their interactions with kids have changed and I asked the same question you're asking. How do you know? When you gave the assessment, did the kids do better? Did they score higher? Did you see achievement? How do you know? And so we're looking at it, we do want to know, but to think people are going to know that after trying something for six or eight weeks, learning doesn't work that way and it's, so it's unrealistic. So I hear you and I validate everything you're asking, but I don't know that it's ever going to be a neat package. So for me, when we adopt our goals, what I hope you support is that it's not going to be a neat package, but here's what our commitment is as a district to our kids, to our parents, to our teachers. That's what I hope our plan and our project convey. And then a commitment to looking at it along the way and trying to measure it as best as we can for sure and looking at our kids and how are our kids doing and that feedback from parents. So it's messy.
And these are the parts that I think are going to be concrete and direct and looking at specifically, these types of things are going to be objectives, these types of things will be able to be measured certain ways.
Yeah, yeah.
But then there's those pieces to it, as Raina so passionately explained, that you're just not able to put your hands around it because it's not going to look the same in every room.
And I think we absolutely get that this is all a moving target, but on the other hand, there are, you know, well, I think we set a pace. Can I just underscore one thing? This is a, because we've had some dealings with the flipped classroom, I think that getting feedback from parents should be a part of this. For example, we had an issue, I don't know how it got resolved, if it got resolved, with if the instruction has to be viewed somewhere, how do you do that if you're, you know, going to, you know, a music lesson or a religious school or a practice? So you're not home, but you're doing your homework on the side, but when you have to flip that and be in a Wi-Fi, do you have to be in a Wi-Fi connected place? And that places some constraints on kids' busy schedules in high schools, certainly. And that's the kind of question that parents may well have had to negotiate, I think. So I think that needs to be part of the mix in evaluating these things.
Can I just respond a little bit to your passion?
Okay.
The passion's fantastic. The part that becomes more challenging for me as a board member, and I really feel like I have responsibility, you know, well beyond my own interest and desire and what you're trying to do, is that if it's going to cost us money, you could be asking us for this money for September, and I don't mean to hold you to what you just said, Chris, but you responded, Robin, very passionately by saying, we can roll out with this stuff in September. And I think you did say that. That has a budgetary implication and you're going to be asking us to think about doing this without having any feedback. That as a board member feels a little irresponsible because then we're just going to have to buy into your passion, honestly.
But my passion's around instruction, so I guess I'm, that's perplexing to me.
Your passion is around the use of technology in the classroom, right?
But in some cases, kids are bringing their own devices. We're not even, in other words, it's, we're not even suggesting at that point that the district buys something. That's what I'm saying, Phil. Of course, I mean, I'm not saying we should, we have a responsibility...
Well, I'm talking about Chromebooks, for example, if we're going to roll out Chromebooks.
Right. I'm with you on the Chrome. I guess I was just, my passion was really around instruction and technology.
Instruction and the classroom, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't really so much about the...
I just, I want to just reiterate that this is the pickle that we're in.
No question.
Is that we feel we're behind, we're accelerating with our, and technology, use of technology in the classroom, and yet, and to echo Maria here, really maybe the biggest cost of all could be hiring the appropriate instructional leaders to actually change the way we're doing technology. So I think it's just somehow we have to square this and we have to do it very quickly.
Yeah, I haven't said anything yet. Something to jump in.
Yeah.
I want to echo what a lot of you said. I mean, there is a concern among the board and a concern in the community that we're doing everything we have to do, but I mean, just sitting back and granted, it's necessarily random because we're throwing a lot of stuff at you, but one thing I think that's pretty obvious is we need to, and I don't know whether one of you had touched on it, but, you know, we need to, we need to narrow down the questions and the issues. One is clearly the use of technology in the classroom, a hardware type of thing. One is getting our arms around, and I think a lot of what Robin was really alluding to is the curricular aspect of teaching. to is the curricular aspect of teaching, teaching technology and where we want to go with that, and I just heard that a lot of folks are intertwining the two issues, and I do think we need to keep them separate to really figure out where we want to go. Now, the inherent problem in there, and I think the reason that a lot of us tie these things together, is there is an inherent chicken and egg. The best example is, if, do you know, if, do you know the curriculum you want to teach using the Google Chrome book?
Apps.
Or the Google Apps, unless you have done the, the background on the Google Apps, right? And similarly, you could look at it the other way. It is a chicken and egg, and I, I'm not sure which is the way we need to do it. It seems to be a bit of trial and error. You know, the Google, I think I sent you all a book about a private school, or an article about a private school in Pennsylvania, albeit a private school, they bought, and I think it was a Catholic school, they bought every student a Google Chromebook, and the reason they did so is because they determined in that district that they didn't want any more downtime from weather events. So there is pre-programmed instruction that the kids have to do, and like the teachers, Anna, and I don't want to take too long on this, but the teachers actually, when they know it's going to be a snow day, have to submit a lesson plan by a certain time. It's still a working day for them, and it's uploaded, and the kids have these Chromebooks with them at home, and so they have a day of school. So different people are using this technology in vastly different ways. So I, I do think that we need to hone the two areas, and maybe in the future, when we're discussing these things, maybe that's a good way of doing it.
I want to just add a couple of quick things. One is to respond to what you said. I mean, I, there is a kind of a multi, you know, chicken and egg issue that things, you know, but on the, you know, I, with you, Chris, I tried to draw the distinction between, all this is about technology in instruction, but we also have to think about instruction and technology. But I, I think broader than instruction and technology, we have to recognize that we're in a, obviously, a very technological world, and where there are very large returns for kids being master, not, not just masters of the technology, because we're all, virtually all going to be masters of the technology, but to be not just users, but producers in a way, and what are the skills that somebody needs to do to be really successful in that world, and what do schools, high schools in particular, need to produce out of kids to get there? I mean, a lot of it probably has to do with the type of skills we're probably teaching in math, you know, the reasoning skills, but there may be other things, like possibly programming, although programming can sometimes end up being a little silly, I've seen some, my son go through some in his school, but it might be programming, it might be something else, but we need to think it's a changing and very competitive world, but I think we have to figure out what, what can we give our students in that realm, which may have very, very little to do with devices, if anything, it might have nothing to do with devices, or software, for that matter. Oh, and one other, just, the other thing I wanted to say is, the other thing I wanted to say earlier is, I think, I also want to hear at some point, some of the thinking about what's device-wise age-appropriate. I mean, what's appropriate for a second grader is probably not the same thing that's appropriate for a 10th grader.
I'd like to see the community discussion on that one.
Well, no, people are-
Because I have to tell you, it's-
Well, people are giving different, but a lot of, but I, people have very different values.
Oh, they do, they have very different values.
But there is also probably informed, expert opinion about what is right, and I think we need to take a stand rather than just being buffeted by social pressures.
When you say what's appropriate for device, are you factoring in that obviously devices can be used with a multitude of software?
Yeah, yeah, we may not want to control that.
Same device for a kindergarten is going to look completely different when you age up a couple of years.
It might, if, whether on a control, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the meeting that you're talking about next week is a public? They're public, we recruited, we advertised last year, it was kind of an all-call last year, so we kind of established a baseline of understanding and knowledge, and so we've invited those folks to come back to the table again. And if anybody else wants to come just to observe, no, it's, this is an invitation-only kind of thing.
We'll reach out to them.
Okay, that's great, so why don't we move on from that?
Thank you, Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hannah, I was going to wait till the comments at the end, but please.
Thanks, I appreciate taking a moment. So Michael Hannah, Irvington, just to follow up, I think there's a very good discussion from the board about devices versus teaching technology, so I won't mimic those, those comments, but, but what I haven't heard, maybe it's underlying, and I just missed it, but Raina or Jesse, you know, Microsoft, Google, Apple, they're reporting billions in profits, and that also struggling to find people to hire sometimes. Are they putting together consortia and creating standards that help you? I mean, we're a small district, why should you and you be the experts on this? I mean, are, is there something that we're using to help inform our decisions, so it's not just piecemeal initiatives, but a larger cohesive curriculum?
I think that's kind of a little bit related to what I was trying to raise, in that, although what Google and Microsoft need now isn't necessarily where, what, what they're going to need in 2020 or 2025, when our kids go on the job market.
Michael, were you referring to standards? Or were you referring to-
Essentially standards, aren't they? Should they be helping us figure this out?
There are standards, they're called the ISTE standards, and they're pretty, they've been, they've been in place for 20 years, I don't know, 20, I use them in my last life. So the ISTE standards are actually, when we did have a written curriculum here in Irvington, when I first got here, it was based on the ISTE, it had been developed based on those ISTE standards, so when we do exactly what you're talking about, which is to really define our curriculum as a district, that would be the standards that we would use. They're pretty much used internationally as technology standards.
ISTE.org, ISTE.org.
What is it, what is it?
ISTE, I-S-T-E, international-
ISTE.
S-T-E. International S-T-E.
Technology Education.
Science, Technology, and Engineering, or something?
Specifically for technology education, standards, all of that standards, and they actually have different strands for technology standards for students, for teachers, for everybody.
Okay, thank you. I guess seeing no further public comments on this, can I go then to the business item in item 10? Can I get a motion to approve item 10, please?
I have a question about item 10 specifically.
Okay, why don't we do that first?
Yeah, I just had one for now, one question on, on the Google Chromebooks, but can you just explain the thought process behind the timing for the chemistry students? Because it makes me nervous to think if you're introducing, if you're introducing something new so close to finals, and, you know, kids who take subject tests or whatever, I, I just don't, I'm worried about that, so.
Do you want to, you want to answer my question?
I guess a big piece, a big piece of the Chromebook, the thought on the Chromebook was that the teachers involved, at least at the high school level, all part of it, actually had instructional design ideas based around incorporating technology in the classroom. We saw an overlap between the advanced placement, the day given students and the back row students, the grade 25 students overlap, so we realized that by putting devices in those students' hands first, that they would basically be able to do more, less devices, more coverage of actually overlapping instruction. Since those are advanced placement courses, they, they're double their advanced placement work in A, since they're almost all seniors, they have gone at that point, we're able to take those devices into the second pile. Since the teacher involved, the chemistry course was part of that, actually had requested using it, demonstrated some ideas for how we would use it, we took a look at the philosophy of each course, what are we going to be having around incorporating those devices for the purposes of building toward the region, and we struggled to get a good fit for the path.
And the, and I'm, again, I'm coming from a different generation, but you don't think there'll be a significant learning curve, I mean, for most of them, it's similar to, it's almost seamless for what they're using, so the kids aren't going to have to, I, I mean, I know, it's an obvious thing, but I'm also just sensitive to a kid going, oh my God, I got to learn this, and then I got to study, so.
We don't see that from the kids, we really don't.
Worrying about a teacher, worrying about seeing the curve.
Okay, I just, I have to ask a question, I know, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say you'd almost see some increased engagement, which could potentially be beneficial, because you're going to, some enthusiasm from the different opportunities that'll be present.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the item 10, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, for our third and final presentation to our packed house, the 2014-15 budget presentation regarding business and finance, debt service, building and grounds, transportation insurance, and interfund transfers. Dr. Harrison.
Just a few things to cover.
So if we kind of roll back the hands of time a little bit to our last budget discussion, we talked about projections, we talked about where we saw ourselves going from a budgetary standpoint, but from there, we projected that the next steps would begin to break down our budget category by category. So this evening, we are going to do so, but our approach is a little bit different than some of what we've done in, over the past two years. As we said, that we're going to tackle a bunch of different areas tonight, but we're going to focus on areas where there are some larger scale changes. We're going to start with buildings and grounds, it's a larger number, a bigger portion of the budget. We're going to look at transportation proportionally, it's a large sum of money, but there's some change there, debt service, and then kind of categorize a bunch of other areas where there are smaller variances in budgetary impacts. So we'll start, as I said, with the most significant areas. Before we lead into each of the categories, I will highlight some of the variances, budget to budget, current operational budget, to where, what our projections are for next year. We are going to then turn things to Bev, and at some point Gary's going to jump in, and we're going to talk about some of the itemized areas associated with these changes in the budget, and then, as in the past, we want to provide a lot of information. We certainly want there to be transparency, but rather than including scores of detail within this particular presentation, we provided those resources for you, and they will be posted on the website as well. So in our first area, we're starting to look at operations, maintenance, that are really a large sum of money. So when we take a look at this, we're starting to talk about a lot of things that happen. So think about what keeps our buildings going, we have to think about the cleaning, we have to think about the repairs, we have to think about the utilities, the people that perform all the work and the supplies associated with that. In this area, we are going to see a 5.53% variance, an increase of 5.53%. Sounds like a large number. We know we have a cap that we use the figure 2% cap, but what does that mean to us? Well, the reality here is that we see a 2.45% actual budget to budget increase. There's actually a shift within how we are paying for sub-personnel here. Our building security, security creators are now included in this area, where they used to be included in other personnel costs. So when we look at the actual increase here, a large percentage, $109,000 of the $195,000 increase that we are seeing, is due to that shift, transferring one cost from one area to another. Another area that stands out is the custodial increases, a number of 4%. Again, that is not, excuse me, reflective of a 4% pay increase, we're looking at a 2.25% contractual increase, but what is also built into there is needs that we have. We have challenges in securing substitutes, so there are different, certainly times when we need to pay custodians overtime, especially when you have poor weather, but we've had staff shortages, we've had staff that have been out on leaves of absence, and we've had to certainly pay for those substitutes, so we're seeing increases in those areas. So now, Bev and then Gary are going to delve into some of the specifics around this area of the budget.
I'm not going to go over line by line, I'll just hit some of the highlights. The equipment in operations and maintenance, you'll notice there's a significant decrease in that code. Last year, we bought a burnisher and a large number of vacuum cleaners, and Gary determined this year we don't need a lot of equipment purchases, so that is a very large savings. Dr. Harrison outlined the building security services. We initially budgeted that we were going to use our staff monitors to do that, that's why it was in another code. We are now contracting with an outside firm, and the other part of that will be reflected in the other codes as they're presented.
Wait, Bev, can I ask a quick question, instead of getting calculated out? The percent change, is that based on the estimated to spend, or is it based on budget to budget?
Budget to budget. The equipment in the maintenance code is basically for a new lawnmower. We're down to one lawnmower to do all of the grounds of Irvington School District. We have one, we right now have two, but one constantly is breaking down because it's well over 20 years old, and it's getting harder and harder to keep it going, so we do need that. Next is district building repairs. These are the repairs, maintenance, that have been basically requested by the building principals. I'm not going to go over line by line, you can read them, but the majority is for painting and for replacement of carpeting, and there's also replacement of window shades in Dow's Lane and installation of shades in the Main Street cafeteria, where there are none. So you can see there, again, more painting, more carpeting. Capital building repairs are more significant changes to our structures that are needed, and I'm going to let Gary elaborate on those a little for you.
I'll start with the electrical upgrades at Dow's Lane, and that would be for the original building. You were speaking about technology earlier at this meeting, and we've added computers and smart boards to those classrooms in that, in that wing. We haven't had any electrical upgrades, so during our fire inspections, we've noticed there's an abundance of power strips and, and extension cords, and the, the fire inspector said we have to correct that problem. So we have to actually pull in new sub panels and then run lines into each class, we're going to add two additional circuits to each classroom. Replacing the failed window balances at Dow's Lane, that's in the new wing, those windows were installed in 1995, and a majority of the balances on the windows have failed, so not all windows are operable. Security upgrades, cameras, we have cameras here on the campus, but there are a few areas that we think we need to add cameras, like the ground floor of the high school building, and maybe some more in the theater gym area, because those, after school hours, those are, well, after school hours, that building is populated, but during school day, the school day, the ground floor of the high school has a lot of activity.
Security.
Right. Replacement of the millwork in the classrooms at Dow's Lane, that would be for the original building at Dow's Lane, built in 1955, it's the, the existing millwork, it's the original millwork, and it's just falling apart, and we need to start changing out that. Repairs to 18 classroom doors, well, door hardware at the Main Street School, that's just start, that would be the doors on the ground floor and the first floor. During our lockdown drills and other drills, we've, these are things that just keep reoccurring, it's the, the doors aren't, the locks hardware isn't working well, it's the original hardware, the keys are worn, the cylinders are worn, so we want to be better able to secure those areas. Upgrades to the PA system here on the campus, we have two systems, one in middle school and one in the high school. We want to be able to use, from either location, we want to be able to communicate, which we can't really do now, and during emergencies, that could be, you know, very important.
Do systems not talk to each other?
Right, correct. Sanding, restriping.
Just a little louder.
Sanding, restriping, refinishing the gym floor in the campus gym. The floor's in pretty bad shape, and we just, we think it needs to be resanded and refinished, because it's in poor condition and during basketball season and, and any other indoor sport activity season, we have issues with slippage and that, that sort of thing. Replacing the- Replacing the failed asphalt walkways between the campus buildings. That's like in the outer courtyard and in between the middle school and the theater gym building. Due to the weather we've been having, they're starting to just disintegrate, and they're tripping hazards, and something needs to be done in that area. Retrofitting the doors, the door hardware, that's exterior door hardware. Right now, as you leave, you'll see there's vertical rods on the doors, and they're starting to fail. We have issues with securing the building. We would like to take those out and retrofit with a center mullion so we can secure the buildings better. Repaving the play area on the east side of Dow's Lane. That's, I think that may be the first grade playground. The asphalt's been there for well over 20 years, cracks, tripping hazards, and we'd like to just fix that up for the students. And all the repairs as needed, roofing, roof leaks, concrete, and asphalt repairs.
Do you want us to ask questions?
Yeah.
How do you want to do questions?
We can do it categorically.
Okay. The, I mean, going all the way back to the custodial costs, you explained that 2.25 or whatever was contractual in Dow's is due to overtime.
Additional substitutes that we need.
I understand why that might explain why we're over this year. But why are you projecting that for next year?
We've been finding historically the last couple of years that we've been using more and more subs through time walk increases to the subs. On overtime, for example, I can't predict next winter, but this past couple of weeks, it's so cold that we've had four pumps that brush the pipes all over this campus, as Gary contested. And so I've given Gary the direction to put an extra overtime guy on at night, on a really cold night, to walk the buildings and monitor them. We don't want a pipe burst and flooding the grounds for eight hours before someone comes in. So those are additional fees that we're coming up with that are unexpected, and I have to build something in there to accommodate that. If we don't have, you know, this cold weather next year, that would be great.
So the biggest driver of that particular piece of the variance is the additional person walking the building during the winter hours?
And the subs.
Right.
Yeah.
And the clear on the floor, it could be burst pipes that we have. We had a pipe burst Sunday, and I have a crew Wednesday Sunday. And if we don't address that, right as it happens on a cold day like today, we lose our whole water point.
I guess that all makes sense, except wouldn't we be seeing, if we're seeing an increase in unexpected costs relating to subs and overtime, wouldn't we see that in the estimated to spend this year versus the budgeted number?
Wherever I don't have an exact figure, I round it, because I'm not sure, because between now and the end of the year, I may have some other subs that are, some other employees hired, paying ones leaving, and I can save some money. But also, if there are shortages in the custodial staff, you'll notice I'm not anticipating spending all the money in utilities. So I'm moving, you know, I'm planning that if necessary, I've got the funds to move. But every year, I try and get this closer and closer to more accurate figures. Utilities, you'll notice, even though I'm always anticipating that this cold weather should ever break, 880,000, I'm leaving it at approximately the same level next year, because I'm really nervous about cutting it all the way back, because, you know, you don't know what the price of fuel oil is going to be, gas, or electric, or the usage. So I would rather feel more comfortable leaving it at that same level.
Okay. And just the $67,000 for the millwork, please. Why would that be in this budget as opposed to the bond? I understand why a lot of this stuff is in this budget. I'm just wondering that in particular, because it seems more, it's a big ticket item and sort of substantial. It sounds like something that's more similar to some of the other things that are in the bond.
We have this line item in the budget for capital building repairs that are maybe large-ticket items, but singularly, they would not be state-datable, because then you'd have to give an architect in and spend paperwork. So then the 67,000 would probably be 100,000, just in order to submit it to the state and state aid. So that's why we're trying to incorporate some of these into the general building repairs.
So obviously, transportation is another part of our operations. And when we think of transportation, we're looking at our students' rides to school, which in every way, our students that reside in Irvington, students that are very Tarrytown, that are part of our community. We look at our special needs students that are transported on special vehicles because of their needs, students that are transported outside of the district to special schools. We look at our obligations that we have for transporting students in our community that attend private schools and, of course, field trips. We do participate in a shared service effort with the Quad Villages, where we have a consortium where the Orange County Transportation Department provides oversight and leadership. We are a shareholder in this enterprise, and we have a vote and say how things certainly work and how things function. We're proud to say that because of the great work that has happened, because of the shared services, the scales of economy, but in many ways, because of the work of the transportation leadership, Mr. Vanowens, that he's found numerous efficiencies for us. And Bev will highlight where these savings are coming up for us, that we're actually going to see a decrease in our transportation budget.
The first decrease is actually in the fees charged to us for our share of the consortium. Last year, initially, Joe had projected 89,000. We, our share, actually came in at 79,250, and we're estimating the same amount again this year. So our consortium fees are going down. We are no longer providing any transportation through BOCs for special ed students. They were able to incorporate those runs, including monitors, in with other runs, or make additional contracts through our private contractors at a much lesser rate than BOCs charging us. So overall, the net impact is a large savings of about $50,000 in BOCs' front.
Debt service, obviously, another area that's near and dear to us all, especially as we're having conversations about the prospect of a bond referendum. This includes all of our financial debt obligations. And this is another area that we are seeing a decrease, and in large part, is the result of the refinancing that the district has completed and the decrease in some financing costs that Bev will highlight.
The first two line items reflected the net amount of about $70,000 reduction is totally attributable to the new bond refunding that we did. The ban principle of.
Refinancing.
Yes. Bond refunding, refinancing. Yeah. The ban principle and interest, you remember last year, we did a ban to pay off tax surgeries? And I was estimating at that time approximately five years to pay it off. And the actual amount that's borrowed is $3,575, so that would be paying off approximately $715,000 a year. So this year, I'm anticipating that I'll have the additional $20,000 to pay off $700,000 this year, due to my tan interest came in lower than anticipated.
Is that a, sorry, is that a floating rate instrument? Is that why it's?
Yes, the ban and the tan, those rates were unknown at the time when I set the budget, because they go out after. We only, the tax anticipation of the tan, we don't borrow until the summer. So we did not actually go out with that until, I think it was the end of the year. And of course, you vote on the budget in May.
Can I just, one of this table, and maybe we'll go on this one. But I was thinking it would be helpful to put in this somehow, the outstanding on this.
I can kind of figure it out from other tables, but not exactly. But this is a very helpful table.
Okay.
But, you know, I'd like to know what the principles are on these.
Okay.
By these particular categories of debt. So I can kind of match it up to the bond service expenses.
Certainly, yeah. There is additional information in the detailed sheets.
I know, but it didn't map perfectly to this.
I can provide that to you.
They even put it on this, have a sheet like this that added that column somehow.
Certainly. I can provide that. And what I will do is I will, before Elaine posts it on the web, I will include it in this presentation so that it will be in there. Okay?
Oh, okay.
Okay?
So when we think of those other categories that I referenced at the top of our discussion tonight, we're looking at smaller areas, areas where there's a variety of different types of variances, and areas that include Board of Education administration costs, district clerk expenses, the associated expenses with the election, the annual election, and other special items that are tied to our budget. So you can see that there's variances associated with them.
Can I ask you a question, just specifically on the other administration costs? The communications around the bond refer, what specifically is that?
I'm going to detail it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a second.
So when we're looking at, you can see other administrative costs increases. But a lot of the increases that you see here, whether it's district meetings, are tied to the anticipated bond referendum, where we're looking at doubling expenses that we typically would have for paying poll workers and rental of equipment during an election. But you can see increases, 6.6 percent, over $25,000 in administrative costs, special items, approximately same figure, due to some increases in BOCs' fees that we have to manage at this point in time. We're also looking at the increases in the district meeting, and I think that's the one area where it really stands out, and you can see the impact of that second election, over 100 percent increase. And then business office increases, 2.5 percent, and really tied to salary increases.
Okay, and I'll, we'll go down these line by line. So the Board of Education codes are going up $2,322, and that's for additional filming, because we will probably be having additional board meetings prior to the bond referendum. The district clerk, that is an increase due, basically due to the increase in the proposed new e-policy review. We were talking about that at an audit committee meeting today, because it's really needed to review district policies so that we are in compliance.
Can I ask just one question about that? That's not something that's under our existing legal contract to have that done, or is that something that we need to?
This is tied with the board docs, and it's through New York State School Boards.
Mr. Montgomery, with respect to our attorney, definitely within the retainer, they provide the review and guidance with respect to the manual revision of policies. So if we map out a plan where we go through, it could take us, we have hundreds of policies. It would take an ordered amount of time to be able to review all of them, to develop a real scope of what the need is, and then to actually delve into the work. What this would do for $4,700, I think.
$4,500.
$4,500, the cost, that they actually have staff, school boards, that they literally go through and evaluate your entire manual and come back and give you a report as to where your deficiencies are, items that need to be revised and updated. So you take that foundation and use that as the basis for the work with your counsel, who then would collaborate with administration and the board's committee to make the necessary revisions.
And for district meeting, you'll see it's going up 100 percent because I budgeted for two district meetings for the bond referendum, which means you have two sets of election officers, two rentals of voting machines, two postings and the ads in the newspapers, et cetera. So that's what that's for.
That's why it becomes so expensive.
It's constantly going back.
Is it something that can be capitalized in the bond?
No, no.
Oh.
That cannot.
And there's no, I think we've talked about this already. It's not practical to hold a bond referendum at the same time as our existing budget vote and school board vote.
We couldn't do it this May. It would have to be postponed until the following May.
Right, which is too long.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is really the cost of getting the fields, really getting the fields moving on a proper schedule.
Correct, correct. The next one is just under 2 percent. The business office is a little over 2 percent. Most of that is due to, you know, contractual salaries, and it's not in the, you know, regular increase. We had one or two staff members who also received longevity. So that was additional increase. The other administrative costs are an additional public information service for bond referendum and new communication service to update Facebook and all of our other accounts, website, et cetera.
Can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit more?
I don't know what you mean.
So one conversation that we've been having within our communications committee is finding ways to better communicate with our community. We recognize, and we look at a room that isn't full this evening, that we are kind of behind in finding ways to connect with our community, whether it's through the types of communications, the methodologies that we use to communicate, or the fact that we just simply need to improve and enhance those communications. And in this, we are looking at possibly partnering with another communications professional, rather than the BOCs services that we have historically used. And in doing so, they will help to increase our profile, help possibly looking at how we can better connect with our community, and will coordinate our communications on a district level to ensure that we're in a much better position to connect with our community members and have them better engaged with the goings-on in our school district.
But isn't, wouldn't some of that cost be offset by what we currently have in our budget this year to pay BOCs? Meaning, I thought we had about, like, $15,000 that we currently spend on that, so wouldn't that be allocated toward that?
We're looking at all the additional mailings that are associated with the second election, the printing of additional documents that are associated with the newsletters and publications that have to go out, adds thousands of dollars.
Are we adding back more newsletters now?
You still have to, you still have to pay for the printing and mailing of the newsletters.
But the required newsletters are just the one-budget newsletter, right?
And then if you have another referendum, you really need to.
It would double that cost next year.
Put another one out.
Okay. I guess, and maybe we can have a separate discussion about this, because I'm kind of not altogether comfortable with the idea of hiring a professional to do this, to, you know, raise the profile. I mean, I think the schools have very high profile in our district. That's why an awful lot of people are here. You know, it seems to me like people are getting the information they want. They're not here because they don't want to be here, not because they don't know we're here. I just am skeptical of that as an important.
That's not the communication you refer to, is it?
I think it's a combination of that. I think we're looking at, yes, there's the things that are tied to budget, the communications that are tied to a referendum. But we're looking at that type of connection and that type of connectivity that we need to have. We do have a great reputation. Our schools do have a wonderful profile. But I think, let's come back and think about the technology conversation before. Think about all the work that's going on in the district. I think we've been very ambitious this year in the types of dialogue that we want to have, the presentations that we've provided. But unfortunately, we're still not hitting all those marks. This provides us that opportunity to get information out about things that we're doing, to be able to have us be more proactive in communication, to share more of what is happening in our schools that we don't hear about. So I think there's opportunities to really engage folks about the exciting things that are happening here. I do also want to say that the majority of the school districts in the area do have communications professionals that are on payroll, not somebody that's coming in and that is consultive services that are contracted to produce so many news stories a week or to do a couple newsletters a year or manage a website for you. They have folks that are half-time employees that are on the payroll getting benefits, that are actually controlling this information, that are managing their website, managing their Facebook pages, that are drafting their newsletters and weekly newsletters, things that we all do in-house. So. So it's an opportunity to step in that direction. It's a conversation that's been ongoing with the communications committee, which hasn't been absolutely finalized, but we've included that projection in the budget at this point.
The next one is small, 1.1 percent messenger mailing. You know, the postage rate has gone up. Special items, this includes an increase for our regular liability insurance, BOSI's charges for administration and capital, as well as a line item for refund of prior year's revenues. This year, we didn't have a line item for that, and so far to date, we've expended $44,000 for those refunds. One was a large one, a $34,000 refund of tuition, which I don't anticipate again, so I did put a line item in for $10,000 for that, because that's more of a normal amount that this district usually expends. The interfund transfer to special aid fund, that was a mandate that was begun about two years ago. We always had to provide some of the cost of special ed tuition for, like, summer school students. But now there's a state mandate that school districts have to pay 34 percent of the tuition paid to state schools, for example, New York State School for the deaf. So that's increased significantly. And I've given a detailed sheet of the history of that code in, with your packet. It's almost the last sheet or next to last sheet. So I increased it a little bit for that.
But that depends on just unknown enrollment and.
Correct.
I mean, some of it's known because teachers, I mean, students who are in those programs will stay in the program, but you don't know who's moving in or out.
Right, right. So if you total and summarize all of the categories that we have presented tonight in our first presentation, this segment of the budget is reflecting a 1.44 percent increase And of that increase, the $190,000, you'll notice that about half of the increase is due to salaries and half other increases.
So if we go and we say, certainly something to be pleased to see the growth below 2 percent in that area, but we have to look at where a lot of that comes from. And a bulk of it, we're acknowledging this coming from the debt service savings that Bev outlined, and the transportation savings that we are able to realize. So we will have discussion on this, but I do want to tease before we get to the next point, that at upcoming Board of Education meeting, that we're going to focus on athletics, special ed, and PPS-related services as our next topic of discussion. But with that said, certainly opportunity for any question and discussion?
Earlier tonight, a comment was made, we talked about how we spent a lot of our money on Eastfield, which is unforeseen, and that was in the capital. What line was that, that we're spending, capital repairs?
That's not, that, but Eastfield is not included in this.
But what we spent this year, you said we didn't spend on other capital repairs because we spent on Eastfield.
Right, that's in the capital fund. It's not in this.
So that's not this, that's the capital fund?
Correct, correct.
Sorry, but there was a budget item, there is a budget item for a transfer to the capital fund, right?
Not in this, not in 1314 budget.
The money was already in the capital fund.
Correct. The last year that was done was 1213.
So how much money will be in the capital fund at the end of this school year?
I'm not sure yet, because the bills are still coming in for Eastfield as we speak. So I would have, I can't give you an estimate at this time.
Okay, so would we need to transfer more money into the capital fund from next year's operating budget, so we have it there?
No, I don't, no, I don't believe so.
No? So where will you get that money next year if we need it? Just from capital building repairs?
No, because I believe that there's still enough money in that capital fund to get us through whatever we pay for land until we bond, you know, if the voters approve doing it.
Okay, but then I guess where I'm getting lost is, I thought it sounded like we haven't had money to do what we originally earmarked it, those funds to do, because we use them for Eastfield.
Right.
So are you saying we're just going to wait until that money comes back to a bond?
We've been doing, some of those projects that we were going to do in 1213, I cannot outline them right now because I wasn't prepared for that. But some of them have been incorporated in the current capital projects that we're doing. If they were immediate, like, you know, doing something with a boiler, repairing a boiler or something, it's already been done, but it was done out of 1314's budget for the same category, capital building. If you'll notice, the capital building repairs this year, the budget's, I think, $290,000?
Yep.
Okay? So we've done some of those projects this year. We delayed them one year and put them into 1314.
Right. But I mean, I guess, I guess where I'm getting at now, and you don't have to go through this tonight, but I might call you and talk to you about it in more detail, is I know that when we talked about briefly about, you know, the buildings and grounds guys, Mary and Phil, are going to be looking at the facilities and come up with a priority list of what should, what the recommendation is to be included if we do a referendum. So then arguably, there's other things in there that we never get to. So is, do we need to also be looking at this capital building repairs line is pretty consistent? We're not really increasing it?
It's been, correct.
So is that something that we need to look at increasing at some point if the buildings are kind of on an ongoing basis, getting, you know, older and older and older? And we, this is a line that I think, I believe we've cut for a few years back. So at some point, you know, I mean, a 0.55 increase is, it's fabulous, but is it realistic?
So. I think as far as future needs, it would be dependent upon how many projects were included in your bond referendum.
Okay.
We put the, the Buildings and Grounds Committee is aware of all of the repairs that have been done, that need to be done, that are in the five-year plan. So they have prioritized the immediate needs.
Right.
Some items in the five-year plan, even though they're on there like five years away, are really not needed, but it was like, the architect recommends that you have a backup generator in every building. That's huge, like $750,000.
Right.
But you don't need it, you know? So it's not on the priority list.
But I think to Robin's point, I think that maybe you should consider adding some more to that, to Gary's area, I guess we could call it, because we have prior years, way, way prior years, they have really slashed that budget.
Right.
And like, just made the news, you know, the royal family's all in trouble because they're overspending, because they're not taking care of their buildings, and everything's falling apart over there.
Okay, with that said.
We want to take care of our princesses.
So in other words, we want to take care of our buildings, and maybe perhaps.
In all honesty, what I did is I was trying to be very conservative this year, because I know we need to stay under cap. I also am aware that the cap is not 2 percent this year. In fact, it was just lowered to, before I do the calculations, 1.45 percent or something like that, it came out. So I have to take all of this into account. I would love to have put in a new maintenance person, because it was taken out of the budget last year, but I didn't put that in, and I tried to be very conservative on all these, because I know that there's going to be some additional instructional needs that are going to be needed.
Right. But, you know, I think that's an interesting choice of conservative, because when I say I'm budgeting conservatively, it means I'm putting in money that I think I'm going to need, and we can take it out later. Now, I'm hearing you say you're being conservative, meaning you're actually budgeting pretty tight because you want to stay under the cap. So I just, I just think it's an interesting point that we all need to be aware of as we're going for this budget. It's fine, it's a style, but it's not, in the past, the budget, the preliminary budget would include most of what we would like, and then we take it out. Now, if you're not including it, I just think then it's, um.
It should go on a wish list, and you should know what that wish list is.
It shouldn't be up to us to kind of figure out what we're being conservative, or whatever you use that word for.
I'm putting in things that I think will have a good chance, but I didn't see the sense of putting in the maintenance person, because I know it would probably be the first thing that was blown off the list. So, but I'd rather have the board consider an additional instructional program or additional needs of the students, because I know that, I've seen those lists, you have not seen them yet. So I was weighing one against the other and trying to be rational.
Right, but I guess, which is great, but I guess at some point, I'd like to know where you're making the judgment calls, as, so as I'm looking at this budget, I'm not assuming that something's more of a given versus you got, you made the judgment call to come up under cap at the first pass of budget, which is fine. Just, is there a way to give us a list so that we see where these decisions are being made?
Don't keep a running wish list forever.
It probably will not be under cap, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
But again, it might be, to me, it's a little early to be worrying about that, but that's fine.
But it's not really, because we've already given direction that we want the budget to remain under cap.
That's fine, as long as I know what judgment calls they're making, so that I'm, as a board member, I'm comfortable with their judgment calls. My concern is if you start budgeting that way now, and we're not aware of where they're doing this, then we're going to be approving a budget without really fully, without full disclosure, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I want to know what decisions I'm approving tacitly, if they're, if Bev's making the decision, well, I'm not putting in, I'm not increasing the capital budget because we want to stay under cap. That's fine, but then, like, can it go on a list?
No, that was not my determination. When the capital, I reviewed that with Gary. Gary and I went over that line by line, and when we got finished, that was the total of Gary's budget that he determined those were the needs in all of the buildings.
I think, to Robin's point, we just need to know what, if there are trade-offs being made in order to stay under the cap, I think we need to know what those trade-offs are so we can be aware of them.
I think maybe to highlight that point, and the example of looking at building repairs, is that term that, that Gary came in after his knowledge of the buildings, meetings with his head custodians, the walkthroughs that he did with the principals, came up with this master list of needs for next year. 100 percent of that list translated. The one area maybe where I think we were conservative was the thought that, that we didn't come in and say, you know, maybe we should be looking at adding custodial or maintenance staff.
No, but not only that, but two things. When you say needs for next year, there's, if money wasn't an object, these are our needs for next year, versus we want to stay under the cap, what can we get by doing? And I guess I would like to, now that I understand that you're the latter, that's helpful to me, but it's hard for me to look at these numbers without understanding the thought process that you're applying to it. Because there might be other things that he's thinking, well, that could wait a year, that could wait two years, but again, and again, also, the second layer of that is that, as you said, which I completely agree with, is some of this is going to tie back to what we end up bonding, or trying to bond, and keeping in mind that, you know, that might or might not pan out, but, but, you know, we're going to sign off, I guess, on what we're bonding, the day that you present your budget to us. So it's kind of hard to juggle that as well. Because if they end up saying, well, we're not going to bond these things, and you're saying, well, I didn't put them in here, then that's a whole other discussion. So I'm just saying, if there's a place that there's a list, at least for me, it would be helpful that I know what I'm looking at as a budget, is that?
Okay.
And also sometimes the one, you know, using Gary as an example, Gary gave you a list of what he thinks needs to get done next year, but maybe the question wasn't asked, what do you wish? What do you really, you know, if money wasn't an issue, using your words, what do you really wish for, for us, so you foresee, you know, two years down, whatever? Just sometimes it's nice to see what that wish list is, because sometimes.
We can, we can give you a list.
Listen, it's getting late, I would like to move along.
I have one other.
Yeah, I just want to make a point on that, because you've been making a bunch of points. I disagree completely, now, we've had this discussion in the past. I disagree completely that the administration, with their, they've been tasked to deliver a budget, and we've tasked them to deliver a budget that's under 2 percent. And if we go down the road of providing a wish list, as if money hadn't meant, meant nothing, which I know the boards have done in the past, I don't see what that really adds to the discussion, frankly. I really don't. I think, I think it's a waste of time, and it's not realistic.
It's, to me, it's not even a wish list, it's actually understanding where the judgment calls are.
Well, I think she just, she just answered it.
But I can as a board, no. I mean, I don't know what other jud, as we move forward, I don't know what they are. I mean, I, if you're asking, if you're saying that the onus is on me to sit here and go line by line to understand.
You're saying that.
Then I will, we're going to be here all night, because I don't have a level of comfort.
Well, we won't, but you're saying.
I'm talking about me, yes. I don't have a level of comfort in a budget if, if you're telling me that the task is to come in under 2 percent, and that you personally are comfortable with the decisions that are being made to get there. I am, I'm a numbers person, and I like understanding the detail behind it, and I'm not comfortable if I don't know that there were some choices made that weren't discussed.
The only thing I'm saying is, it's not a me versus you, or you versus anything, but this is your seventh or eighth budget, honestly, and you have to know by now that there are judgment calls made in most budget line items as to what to put forward and what not. So it's a bit disingenuous for you to say that you don't understand that there's judgment calls being made.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, yes, and generally, the judgment calls in the very end end up being a board's judgment call, but the board could only make those calls if they know what they're making. If I'm given this as a given, and I'm not told what the judgment calls are, then I have no decision, I just, I mean, and that's fine.
Listen, I disagree with you, but of course you have a decision, but this is a push, this is a push-ahead budget.
But I can't approve a, okay, then.
Nobody's asking you to. Nobody's asking you to. You're not approving anything tonight.
No, I'm not, but I don't have the data necessary to make an informed decision if you're saying I'm going to take what I'm given and be happy with that and not drill down.
I never said that.
Okay, that's what I heard, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, you can play it back. I never said anything like that. I'm just saying that, you know, you're making a big deal about the fact that there's judgment calls being made in all these line items. You should, of course, know that there are judgment calls being made, but in light of the fact that we've, we've said that this is a push-ahead budget, first of all, that's the presentation, and secondly, that we've already directed the administration to come in under the 2 percent tax cap. I mean, if you want to go line by line with Bev outside of a public meeting, I mean, that's fine. I don't, I don't think that's proper to do here, but I just, I, what I was taken aback by is you, you making the statement that you didn't understand that there were judgment calls being made in various budget line items, because of course there are. There are, there are in every budget. You know, and that's what, that's what Bev is tasked to do, is to make judgment calls and present them to the board.
I think I, so I feel I'm not going to rehash. But, okay, well, I have another question about transportation. And it basically looks like we're increasing, well, you have a 1.74 budget-to-budget increase. It's slightly higher, maybe like a 1.8 something if you go actuals to budget. That's less than the cost of living. I'm assuming the cost of living has gone up more than 2 percent this year, and usually busing costs go up by the cost of living. I don't even know, I believe that our contract with, I mean, the contract with, we extended one year, and we had a big deal with them, and at the last minute, they gave us the cost of living, and they weren't going to. So can you tell me what your assumptions were with regards to the overall cost of transportation, because that seems very low as an increase?
Figures were calculated and given to me by Joe Urbano, as he analyzed the contracts. He's gotten us some great efficiencies through consolidating. You'll notice that I'm not expending the total amount in both of those codes this year.
No, you're spending like $800,000, and you're saying next year is going to raise, well, 1.
Eight nineteen.
Eight twenty.
So private schools this year, we budgeted 635, we're estimating 620. So that's a, that's a $15,000 savings.
Right.
Okay? So that $15,000, I bumped it up by 12, the budget-to-budget, but that's really a 20, almost $28,000 increase in estimated expenditure, because I didn't expend it all this year.
Okay.
They don't know the CPI yet for transportation, but he was just basing it on something I'm not sure.
The overall CPI went up 1.5 percent last year.
Well, yeah, but the, last year, but the CPI for this year won't be given out until almost summertime.
But do we know that they've agreed to extend its CPI? Did they agree again this year?
Yes, they did. Yes, they have.
And is that specifically a CPI for transportation, or is it overall?
Yes, yes. No, the CPI is issued by the New York State Education Department Division of Transportation.
Okay.
And the private school transportation, does that number also include any additions that Scott Palermo has projected, or is that only taking into account what Joe Urbano, which is kind of edged up, or just grows up what we currently have?
His line would be the special education, two more lines down. His line would be the special education, two more lines down, versus transportation, special education.
Oh, that's private, okay, yeah.
And there is consideration.
So that was with, that wasn't only just grossing up, okay, okay.
Do, um, just a quick question, do we, the transportation providers pay for their own fuel or do we pay their fuel separately?
We have a contract where we pay the fuel, we pay a certain number of gallons.
This is kind of an agreement to give them, to compensate them for that? They don't...
Correct.
Get the fuel from the village or anything?
No. Actually, I believe they buy it off of New York State contract, and it's delivered to them, but it's a lower cost.
Is that, sorry, is that part of our budget, is the fuel costs?
Yeah, the fuel costs are in, bred in those figures.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Well, I have a few questions. But, um, just a, one request on the, on the budget table is when you have the, I guess they're FTEs, the, these personnel numbers?
Yes.
It would be very helpful to see both this year's FTEs and what if any, what's, what's projected for next year or two, because I think it's...
Yeah.
Because I, in the past, at least that, last year, that wasn't done and it was, I felt last year it would have been useful to see.
All of these are current, 13, 14, and 14, 15, there's no change in any of these right now.
Okay. Fine, but I think as we go forward, it would be helpful to keep that in mind. You know, a, a general comment, not something we need, and I don't want to bog us down in lots of back and forth, but I'll just kind of say the things that are on my mind. I feel like the, all the maintenance, capital spending, all of that, needs to be looked at as a sort of, kind of as a whole, in terms of what is the, what, what do we need to be spending, you know, on an annual basis if we were to really be doing maintenance, upkeep, replacement, whatever it is, at the, at the longer-term pace we need to be doing it at? You know, are we, are we doing it at the right rate? Are we doing it at too low of a rate to keep up with our maintenance or, or what? Because I've heard talk that we cut back on that a few years ago, so presumably, we're getting somewhat behind on it. You know, it, it, you know, if, if there is an opportunity in the budget, and I'm, I'm cognizant of the tax cap, but if there's an opportunity in the budget to try to catch up on some of that, if in fact, we have catch-up we need to do, I think, I strongly think it's something we should consider doing. I also think, I'm, I'm also uncomfortable about the, the separation of bonded projects from the non-bonded stuff, and I want to understand, again, that's, that's a difficult subject and it might be something that Bev, that you and I should talk about separately, I want to understand what, are, are we just bonding things as a way to catch up on things that we maybe shouldn't have fallen behind on over the years anyway? If we, if we had more maintenance spending in the last few years, we wouldn't need to be bonding some of what we're talking about borrowing or not.
You mean bonds that are currently in place or are...
No, I'm talking about the discussions we have for what we would, what we would include in the...
Facilities improvement that we part of.
Okay.
And I, I feel like I also want to understand with you what the aiding issue is on the bond, but I, I want to...
Okay.
Perhaps, you know, that may be a complicated formula, is it a formula that, that...
Building aid, oh yes.
Yeah, I'd like to understand that and how that works. Because my, my concern is that we, it's not ideal, I think, as a district to get into a situation where we're borrowing for maintenance expenditures that really should be things we're doing every year, not that we're kind of, you know...
But John, we're definitely...
Wait, wait, well, that basically the maintenance expenditures are essentially should be, in my view, operating expenditures, and we've, maybe we've gotten behind on it, but it's a way to sort of take those operating expenditures and make them capital expenditures, but I'm not sure I'm that comfortable with that. So that's a, you know, feel, something I feel like I want to get a better picture about, because there's the interplay of what's maintenance in this budget from what projects we're talking about, like roof repairs, for example, in the, as a capital expense.
Well, that's a, that's a maintenance, but then there are, like, the projects that we're looking at.
Well, yeah, there's, then there's things like the...
They're replacements.
Well, replacement is almost maintenance too, in a way, right? It's not a new building, it's, it's, the old building reaches the end of its useful life and you need to replace it or parts of it, anyway.
But, but John, I mean, you say these things publicly, it's important to be factually correct. There is nothing on the list that we reviewed together as a board last week that is a maintenance item. You're right, some of the requirement for, for the funding might be because of lack of maintenance over the last 10 years, but we're not putting maintenance projects themselves into a potential bond referendum.
Could be, I think you could debate whether roof repair...
But why, why do we need to? What does it matter?
Why, well, I, I only, Phil started debating it, so, you know...
But a roof repair, roofs have a lifespan.
I know, I know.
Right, no, but I...
And everything, every, every, every piece of our buildings have a lifespan, and over time, we maybe should be budgeting.
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would...
I got a...
A $300,000 expense. Guys, I think we're getting a little bit far afield, I mean, if, I think you, a lot of these questions you can discuss with Bev, maintenance versus...
But some of it, I think, is important for us, for me at least, then maybe John and I'll go discuss it, but, you know, I just, I, I think it's easy to say I'm going to bond it, but then I think maybe then we have to think through, there's a, there's a cost to paying that interest and that debt service. I mean, sometimes if you look at all of our bonds, if you ever took a look at the total interest that we paid over the past 30 years, that is a huge number, huge. And so, you know, I think we've got to be mindful of that, you know, it's...
I think what you're saying is completely factual, I don't know...
If you're able to take, if you're able to look at the interest and see if you could pay some of it over time instead of paying more interest, look, it all comes down to how much money our community pays in taxes.
Right.
And whatever we could do that was the, the right decision for that, I think we'd all agree we want to do. So I think we're just...
Hey, listen, I, I hear your point, I hear your point, I hear your point.
That's all we're saying.
Okay, please, let me just say one thing.
I thought I had the clip, okay, go.
Well, I, you know, is, yeah, well, I hear everything you said, you're absolutely right. You've been on the board for seven, eight years, you know full well that, at least as far as you're concerned, I'm, I'm surprised you'd want additional analysis because you were part of the budgets that have, especially in the last few years, used a lot of those maintenance funds to come in under the 2%, so I, I guess I'm wondering why it's, it's suddenly a new issue.
It, it's a new issue.
I mean, clearly, we've had the bond projects.
Well, no, 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 it's a new, it, the only reason I would, I wouldn't call it a new issue, but I think we're looking at, for the first time since I've been on the board, we're looking at bonding more facility stuff, which makes sense, but it, I've never looked at that before. And, and, you know, plus everything, every year, you look at everything from a fresh set of eyes and you see what makes sense. So again, every, it might make sense to bond more, I don't know. I just, I'd like to understand, which I've never, never gotten into this before, but like, like John said, the ratio of adable versus interest and where that falls out and, and what is the best use of our funds moving forward for the district. I, I mean, look, we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of decisions to make as we move forward over the next few months, and so how best to do that, I think, you know, and each of us, each of us posts it from a different side, obviously. I'm just a, I like numbers, I'm analytical, so...
It sounds like you need to have a conversation with Bev, I'm not quite sure it's a public meeting discussion to be quite honest with you.
More of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yeah, I, I think I look at it as, you know, there, there is a whole set of things we need to do and the money we need to be spending to make our buildings and grounds, to keep them, keep them in the condition we want and to make them what we want them to be, and that's fine. We should be, no, we should know what that money is and where the projects are and when we should be spending the money, and then we can, and then it's a separate discussion of how we go about paying for it, whether it's in the budget or whether it's, we borrow it, you know? But, but both of those are important discussions, they're separable discussions in my view. You know, we shouldn't be making maintenance decisions just based on, necessarily just based on a budget target or a bond target necessarily, we should be asking what's the right thing to do, and then, then we maybe have to make some, some compromises about what we do based on financial considerations, but I first want to know what our needs are and what our wish lists are on, on maintenance and, and capital spending. Okay. Can I, not for now, but I'd like to find out more about how we're charged for the private school students, how many students we have, how, what's, what's, how many schools we service, if it's possible, I don't know if it's possible to get a breakdown on that?
How we, how, can you elaborate, because you're saying how...
I'd like to get a picture of that, that private school transportation line.
Okay.
How many, how many students are using our services?
Oh, so you want that private school, because you originally said how we charge for private schools.
Oh, yeah, well, I would also probably like to know that, but that was a misstatement.
Well, I mean, are you talking tuition?
We don't charge.
No, no, how do we, how do we, yeah, okay, then forget it, I, lateness of an hour made me encounter, but, I'd like to know how many students use that service, what's, you know, if, is it possible to get a handle on which, how many go to which schools?
Oh, sure, that's not a problem.
Like, you know, how many go to Masters, middle and upper, how many go to Hackley, how many go...
They can have that tomorrow, but they, they keep that in the transportation.
Okay. And is there, how do we ensure, and this, I speak from some anecdotal knowledge, how do we ensure that, we're, we're paying on a, what, some sort of a per-head basis? You know, Irvington uses X amount of, has X number of students using this transportation, so we pay what, to Ardsley or to somebody on that basis?
No, we pay to the outside contractor. Ardsley coordinates it and Ardsley School District prorates the bus.
Okay. But how do they, my question is, how do they do that proration?
I get a sheet every month on the bill and it's prorated, and if you've got one bus that's $18,000 and you've got five Irvington kids and 10 Ardsley kids, we get charged one-third of the $18,000.
And do we have any mechanism in place, kids at the, kids, before April 1st have to sign up for this busing, do we have any mechanism in place to see that they're actually using it? Or we, we may be paying for busing that people don't use, especially to Masters.
If they sign up for it, um...
And I think even...
By legal right, we have to, we have to have that bus there.
You have to provide, you have to back up the service if they don't.
But, but, but we're, well, you know, I, I'm sure that if somebody in Legend Hollow signs up to go take a bus to Horace Mann, say, or Riverdale, a Riverdale Country Day and never uses the bus, that bus isn't going to be showing up on that kid's door every day. The bus driver, these are bus drivers who just have one or two kids on their route.
They do. They do the route every day. They might not stop.
Well, I know that they've stopped on certain...
But they do the route every day.
But they still, we still have to pay for it.
But John brings up an interesting point. For example, I knew of a particular child went to Oneonta Prep, and the parents signed up for busing, but they ended up driving because of after-school activities, they never ended up using the bus.
Yeah. Still have to have it available.
Had to pay.
Right.
So what about evaluating that and maybe saying, hey, you realize that you're costing us money and you're not using it?
It's New York State law.
New York State law.
But, but we're paying for something that the service is, well, or, you know, there are kids who do sports at these private schools, including my son, who don't use, never use, when they're, when, during sports season, they never use the bus.
Well, that you can't do anything.
If you do, if you do not sign, if, as a parent of a parochial student, if you do not sign up, then we would not pay.
Right.
But if you sign up for the bus, we have to pay.
But it's a free, my, my concern, maybe there's no solution to this, my concern